I now call to order the regular meeting of the City of Tar- of the Board of Commissions for the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, April 15th, 2014, at 6:30 roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terry Penny.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seabird.
Here.
Tonight's dedication will be given by Reverend Melody Kidd of Signature Healthcare. Will everyone stand? Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Tonight, oh God, we join our hearts together, coming together in this meeting, asking for your guidance and asking that you season our words with your grace. We ask, oh God, that you remember those in the military and those missionaries throughout the world. Oh God, may your providential care be upon all. We remember our national leaders, but tonight, we specifically remember our leaders right here in the community and that you will give them the discernment that they need to make the decisions for this community. Tonight, oh God, we thank you for the rain and we are appreciative of the sunshine. Now, may your grace and peace be to all. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now go to public comments on any item that will not be discussed this evening.
Good evening. Anita Prose, 901 Bay Shore Drive. What are the plans about the road when you cross the bridge at the yacht club with all the potholes, cracking, and I know part of it is county, but it's bad on our cars. Have you talked to the county or are there any plans to do anything with that road?
Hopefully, yes. We're in talks with them now.
Now?
And we'll have a report maybe by the next commission meeting on where we are.
Very good, because it's really bad on the shocks and the springs of your cars as you go over it. Thank you.
There are no other public comments. We'll go to a special presentation. Item number one is the Mayor's Top Apple Awards. And it's indeed an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to welcome each of you to Tarpon Springs Fourth Annual Mayor's Top Apple Award. And as mayor, along with my fellow commissioners, it's our pleasure to continue to recognize those schools and outstanding leadership in our community. And we're very grateful of partnership that we have and how it continues to encourage academic excellence among our students and teachers within our local schools. You know, this Top Apple Award was originated eight years ago by St. Petersburg former mayor Rick Baker. And in order to qualify for the Top Apple Award, the school-based administrators, along with staff, student staff and partners, had to move their schools up to a letter grade or maintain an A based on the state's accountability system. And what I'd like to do right now is to introduce some of our special guests. First is Robin Wykel, Pinellas County School Board member. I have Terry's name down. Terry Krasner.
She was named.
We still would like to honor her and see her. And Ms. Peggy O'Shea, another school board member. Dr. Michael Greggo, Superintendent of Schools. Laurie Mattway, Associate Superintendent of Schools. Pam Moore, Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. I think I saw her. And also has Patricia Wright as Area Superintendent here. What I'd like to do is, if possible, is to read this proclamation that, from the City of Tarpon Springs. It reads, "Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs has made education a top priority by supporting and advocating for its public schools. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs seeks to recognize area public schools for their outstanding academic achievements and accomplishments. And whereas for 2012-13 school year, Tarpon Springs area schools excel on their FCAT scores with five schools receiving an A grade and met the Top Apple criteria. And whereas, thanks to the efforts of the committed principals, teachers, school officials, staff, parents, and students, Tarpon Springs area public schools have shown great positive momentum by achieving an A grade during a time when increased standards make it more difficult to maintain and improve school grades. Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is proud to recognize the 2013 Mayor's Top Apple Awards recipients. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby congratulate the Mayor's Top Apple Schools, Tarpon Springs Fundamental Elementary School, Tarpon Springs Middle School, Tarpon Springs High School, Eastlake High School, and Plato Academy, Tarpon Springs." At this point, we'd like to turn it over to the clerk and if all of us can go up and hand out these awards.
This evening, we will recognize 16 school-based administrators from five local schools having an A. Each administrator will receive a custom engraved marble apple, a proclamation, and a personalized banner to display with pride. Our first school is Tarpon Springs Middle School. We have Principal Dr. Susan Keller, Assistant- Assistant Principal Margaret Atkinson. Assistant Principal Norris Brown. And Assistant Principal Michael Macado, who's not in attendance this evening. The next school is Tarpon Springs Fundamental School. We have Principal Dr. Elaine Miles. From Plato Academy, Tarpon Springs, we have Lori McGovern, accepting on behalf of Principal From Eastlake High School, we have Principal Carmella Haley, Assistant Principal Cindy Green, Assistant Principal Kyle Johnson, Assistant Principal Ruth Ryle, Assistant Principal Andrea Panarelli. From Tarpon Springs High School, we have Principal Clinton Herbeck, Assistant Principal Scott Decatur, Assistant Principal Lisa Falidis, Assistant Principal Melinda Hassanplug, If you could please join us in congratulating our 2013 Mayor's Top Apple recipients.
You know, this award was made a lot easier because of individuals in our community that helped to sponsor it. And we'd like to recognize, thank you for calling, I don't know if Dr. is in the room, Mr. Ed Hoffman of Hoffman Architects. Mr. Sister Seals of Tarpon Springs is Mr. Benny Perkins. And I did see Mr. Bruce.
Yep.
Oh, there he is. Well, we're happy to have Mr. Bruce Berg up here from Florida Hospital Mr. Christopher Steele. Christopher's sponsoring along with Ferment Chevrolet of Tarpon Springs and Public Supermarkets. And we can get a round of applause for all of those individuals who helped to pray the cost of doing this and trying to recognize our schools as doing well. And we know one of the foundations of the community is our schools and public education. So, we're very thankful. Also, we'd like for one of mine, you know, all of my favorites, but one of my favorite school board members to come forward, and that's Mr. Robin Wykel. But also, you know, since Terry couldn't come.
Oh, oh, ooh, they are gonna be so jealous. Okay.
And, you know.
Mr. Cook.
No, no. Hey, tell my friend Carol she has to come up here, you know. Yeah, yeah. You know, I love them all. You know, and I know all of them.
Why do you take her?
You are my favorite. But Peggy, close enough. I know Peggy a long time, you know. We just wanted to let her know that we definitely appreciate her. And I like to thank the best superintendent around, you know, somebody that's trying to do very innovative things, helping all of our children to succeed. So, we'd like for Dr. Gregor, if you would come.
Yeah, it's an extra one.
We have to sit Mr. Carol, let her go back and do that, you know. They told me to be right and fair. And we'll then go take our seats. And we'll open it up to public comments. We know that everybody's here tonight because of wanting to honor our, our schools. So, if you would like to come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Robin Wykel, 10138 Nottingham Drive, Tarpon Springs. Mayor Archie, Commissioners, Chief Cochin, Irene, thank you for your support for education. Thank you for your support, Chief LaChorus, he's looking, I forgot, your support for public education, for education in Tarpon Springs. First, I want to thank the schools that are here and their leadership. You are the representation out in our community, the principals, the vice principals, assistant principals. You're the face of our schools. And leadership matters. It's leadership, leadership, leadership. And we appreciate what you do and what you represent. I believe education equals employment equals economy. And Tarpon Springs has a lot to brag about with our school system. And I'm always the one out there bragging. And I just, I'm so proud of what you have accomplished and what your students are doing locally. Back to this group. I'm sure most people get up here and they want them to do something. They want our commissioners, our student manager to do something for us. I just want to tell you, I want to assure all of you, they are doing something for education. I bother them a lot. I meet with Mayor Archie regularly, Chief LaChorus, on every kind of educational initiative that you can think of. Some of it probably not, some of it a little bit cheesy. They stand up, they rise to the occasion, they answer our phone calls, they support the district, they support the superintendent. I can't, there's not one of them on there that doesn't believe education is important and believe that equation, that education equals employment equals economy. I'm sure my three minutes is up. But I just, they're mentoring that you are, you are, we are blessed in our community to have the leadership that we have up here. And we appreciate you. Pinellas County Schools appreciate you. Thank you.
There are no other public comments. Any additional comments? Commissioner, Vice Mayor Lawson.
Thank you. I'd really just like to say congratulations to the schools. And I'd also like to say thank you to the school officials, principals, assistant principals that are here, the district officials. I'm a teacher, and I know that this is FCAT week. So, these school officials came, came to be with us during FCAT week. And that's, that's a big deal. And so, I really do congratulate you on your accomplishments. And I thank you for being here.
There are no other comments. We'll go to our next item. And it's still another one I can say that I enjoy doing. And that's to introduce our team council. But before we introduce the team council for the City of Tarpon Springs, I'd just like to read some of their duties. One is to recommend equipment needs and budgetary consideration for city's parks and recreation program. Two is to provide recommendations, suggestions, and assistance with youth events for the city-sponsored festivals and programs. Three is to organize and perform service projects which benefit the community of Tarpon Springs. And five is to serve as advisory board for issues related to youth that the Board of Commissions wishes to delegate to the team council for its consideration. And I'd like for the following members to stand when their names are called. And we have Chairman Michael We have Vice Chair Kayla Renato. Kayla Cruz is secretary. We also have DC Austin, a member. Mr. Santiago Benitez. Rachel Navarro. Sarah Yudders. And we have ex-official members as Jake Miller, Cahini, Trifol. And we couldn't do this without the teacher's sponsor. We definitely would like to recognize Ms. Tanya King. I'm not sure if any of the teams would like to come up and say something.
Mayor Archie and the City of Tarpon Springs Council, on behalf of the team council, we just want to thank you for inviting us here tonight. And to let you know that we are excited to be working with you. And we're excited for a great year moving forward and that we are ready to help and we are ready to hear ideas and also bring forth ideas. So, thank you. And thank you, everybody. And congratulations, everybody, on the awards. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? You know, I could tell my friends, we definitely would like to have y'all here all evening. I think we're gonna be here at least another hour or so with all the people that we have in the crowd. But you can always feel free, whatever that you like to, to, to exit. Right now, what we'd do is like to do our proclamations. And we have a few of them. The first one is, I didn't mean I had to do it immediately, but. I know y'all have plenty of these meetings to go to. Our first proclamation is Earth Day. And this proclamation reads, "Whereas Earth Day is celebrated on Monday, April 22nd, 2014. And whereas the Earth Day theme this year is green cities. And whereas Earth Day Network launches the Green Cities Campaign to help cities around the world become more sustainable and reduce their carbon footprint, focusing on three key elements, building, energy, and transportation. And whereas the campaign aims to help cities accelerate their transition to cleaner, healthier, more economically viable futures through improvements in efficiency, investments in renewal, technology, and regulation reform. Whereas the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the importance of this campaign to come together and do our part in securing a healthy and sustainable future. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim April 22nd as Earth Day." We also have another one for National Arbor Day that I will not read. But we have one for National Librarian Week that reads, "Proclamation City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Whereas librarians help, help change their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls. Whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. And whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebook. And whereas librarians offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing, 24/7 homework help, financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. And whereas librarians continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas librarians and librarians and library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Librarian Week. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through the 19th as National Librarian Week. And I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful resources available at our library. Lives change at And I forgot that our library was here. The only one this year. Would you like to say something?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to thank you for this proclamation and also for the next proclamation honoring our wonderful Friends of the Library. The Friends have done so much for our library over the past 50 years, including supporting the Pesca Business Center, the Friends used bookstore, and library programs throughout the year. For National Library Week, we're having a scavenger hunt at the library with prizes sponsored by the Friends. And also, it'll be 50% off on all Friends merchandise, including this new little notepad we have available at the library, which is a Friends merchandise product. And also, coming up on May 3rd, I want to let you know, we have a baseball history program sponsored by the Friends on the former Miami Marlins, the team from the 50s and 60s. The author of The Forgotten Marlins will be speaking at the library. And also, former Commissioner Jim Archer, who played on the Miami Marlins team, will be at the library to speak as well. He played there before going on to his major league baseball career. For more information on all of our library programs, we have a newly redesigned website, tarponspringslibrary.org. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to item number six, which is Friends of the Library 50th Anniversary. This proclamation reads, "Whereas this year marks the 50th anniversary of the Friends of the Tarpon Springs Public Library. And whereas the Friends of the Tarpon Springs Public Library raise money that enables our library to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, special equipment, enhanced service, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of service to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers, advisory, and children's services. And whereas the Friends give for their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to the positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I, David Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby recognize and celebrate this year, the 50th anniversary, Friends of the Library, Friends of the Tarpon Springs Public Library. And I offer gratitude for the years of service and commitment to the City of Tarpon Springs. And I encourage all residents to join me in acknowledging the many contributions of the Friends of the
Sherry Patterson, 1505 Pointcetta Avenue, Tarpon Springs. I am past president and current treasurer of the Friends of the Library. And I cannot thank our library staff enough for their participation with us in raising funds. But mostly, I'd like to thank this commission and the commissions that have served before you since I've been with the Friends of the Library. And that's been about eight years now. You all have been so supportive. It's rare that you see a group that is 100% behind their library. And we see them all over this state where libraries are closing every day. I thank you so much. You make being a Friend of the Library easy. And I hope this coming year, we'll be able to help as much as we have in the last 50. Thank you.
We definitely want to thank you and all of the members of the Friends of the Library for all that you do in support of our library. Are there any public comments on this item? Then we'll go to a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Bob, you gotta walk a little faster now. I know you don't come to visit us that often.
Bob Dockery, Innis Drive, 64 Innis. I'd like to just take a moment to thank Carrie and everybody associated with the library and the Friends of the Library. It's been something close to my heart as a former- It's been something close to my heart as a former board member in the olden days and currently associated with the library through Writers Group. I appreciate the support that the library has given to the Writers Group over the years and particularly Carrie. And that group has turned out quite a few novels that have been published and has helped writers, and I appreciate that.
And we thank you for all you've done in support of the library over the years. We now have a presentation from the Library Advisory Board.
Mayor Archie, City Commissioners, other distinguished guests on the panel. My name is Bill Grantham. I'm chairman of the Library Board. And we are here this evening to present our annual report as required by our charger. You have a copy in front of you. I hope you'll hang on to every word of it. We will do an oral presentation. We selected one of our board members to do that oral presentation, and I hope that you will hang on to her every word. Her name is Peggy Prestos, and we selected her to be our spokesperson this evening. Thank you very much. Peggy.
Thank you.
Susan Cooper, the noted British author, once said, "The lucky child has a parent who reads to him. The lucky child has books on her shelves. All children should have the luck to have a public library filled not only with information and computers, but with books and book people." As they are going forward trying to get the slide presentation, I'll just talk. Last year, the library had more than 700 visitors per day. That's more than the same number of people that went to the Lowry Park Zoo in a day. We think that's pretty impressive, especially such a small town. We also, the library's mission is to provide excellent service and educational opportunities for all of its residents. And that is what the Tarpon Springs Library chooses to do every day. Staff members and volunteers provide programs and educational opportunities and different events throughout the year. This year, in the report, you'll find the numbers from 2013. But just to bring you as an update, this year through March, there were more than 309 adult programs of this year. And that was a 16% increase over last year at the same time. Those programs were presented to 3,754 people. There were 388 youth programs this year through March, which was a 31% increase over last year. And that was to 6,252 young people. Staff, volunteers provide one-on-one training, technology training. And the library has eBooks, digital audiobooks, downloadable music, and databases. There are eBook collections, a library mobile app, the library website, which is tarponspringslibrary.org. Last year, the Friends of the Library provided $14,000, more than $14,000, to the library to buy more books and equipment. And of course, as you just heard, we're celebrating the 50th anniversary. The library also has many partnerships throughout the community and throughout the Bay Area, the Tampa Bay Area. And one of the programs that is very successful, in addition to all the others, is Makerspace After School STEM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Labs. This year, we have a new science base, which you will also find at the library page. All in all, libraries provide a lot of value to any community, to each community. And the state, in a report and a brochure that you also received in your packet, showed that for every dollar that was invested in the library, $10.18 in economic benefits is received by our residents. In closing, Isaac Asimov said, "It isn't just a library. It's a spaceship that will take you to the farther reaches of the universe. A time machine that will take you to the far past and far future. A teacher that knows more than any human being. A friend that will amuse you and console you. And most of all, a gateway to a better and happier and more useful life." Thank you.
We thank you for that report. It would definitely appreciate it. All of the members of the Friends, I'm at the current Library Board. Are there any Commissioners? Commissioner Tarpani?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Library Board for their presentation this evening. It's always a presentation that I think this board, including myself, looks forward to. Especially, excuse me, especially I look forward to it because of the statistics that you show. Every year, they are overwhelming to me in the sense that 700 people a day visit our library, and that adds up to about 214,000 people a year. To me, that's something that I think everyone should be very proud of. I'd like to express my gratitude for you all, for your service, and congratulations in reaching your 50th year and anniversary. So, thank you for all that you do.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes, I as well want to say thank you. My grandmother likes to volunteer there, and she can't speak highly enough of all the staff and everything that you all have to offer there. And I'm also pleased to see as well that you're keeping up with the times as far as a mobile app now and an increased addition to the Overdrive Digital Book System. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, and the board. What an impressive statistics that you showed us. Also, this after-school Makerspace program, I think, is amazing for our young kids and very necessary. And I also want to thank you for your service and all that you do. I see lines outside the library, waiting lines to get in in the mornings, and that's very impressive. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Not that we thank you and keep up the good work. With that, we'll go to item number eight, Audit Report.
I'd like to introduce Laura Brock. She's shareholder for Mayor Hoffman &amp; McCann. They are our external audit firm. And she's going to give you some information about this past year's audit.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Laura Kruger-Brock. And as indicated, I am the partner with Mayor Hoffman &amp; McCann, who performed the 2013 financial audit. And I'm here today to go through those results. I've handed out a brief summary of information that should be communicated with you in a follow-up with some of the items that we had from the prior year, when I stood before you a year ago and talked about some comments and recommendations that we had. I want to thank Ari Walker and Ron Harry for an outstanding job again this year with providing us with timely information. When we come out to do the audit, we provide a very lengthy list of things that we need to look at, documents that we have to review, sample items that we test. And they, again, were very timely with us in providing us with that information. I also want to congratulate you again in receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is given by the GFOA. This is the 22nd consecutive year that you received that for fiscal year 12. And the 13 report has been submitted to GFOA for that award again this year. And that's an outstanding award to receive. And to get it 22 years in a row speaks very highly of your financial department and the financial reporting information that they put together. Turning to page two, the scope of services. We were the independent auditors, and we provided an audit opinion on the financial statements that is now referred to as an unmodified report. In the past, we've referred to that as an unqualified, and there was terminology change. But in layman's terms, that's a clean opinion, and that's what you're most likely are important to hear to you. So, you have an unmodified report on the audit. The management discussion and analysis is just to remind you, that is unaudited, that is prepared internally by management. We do look at the numbers and tie them out, but we do not audit those. Then included in the comprehensive annual financial statement is the basic financial statements, the notes to the financial statements, required supplementary information, which is also unaudited. And then there's some regulatory items. You fall under the standards of government auditing standards, so we have to go above and beyond financial audit. And we issue our independent auditor's report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance with other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. We've also issued in the CAFR the independent auditor's management letter as required by the Florida Auditor General. The Florida Auditor General requires us to review certain items relative to investments, benchmarks relative to financial conditions, and to report on any findings and recommendations that we had. In addition to performing the audit for the financial statements of the CAFR of the city, we also prepared an independent auditor's report for the EMS Department required by Pinellas County, and a separate report on the Fire Department, which is required by the county. Turning to page three, our responsibilities under GAAP, generally accepted auditing standards and GAS, Government Auditing Standards, included all the compliance items that we have to look at. You act as the governing board for the financial reporting, so there are a few things here I'm required to review with you. One of those is if there were any changes in accounting policies, which there were none, so I have none to report on that. No difficulties in performing the audit. Audit adjustments, we're required to review those with you. And I'm very pleased and happy to report that we had no corrected and no uncorrected audit adjustments. So, what that means is that there were no adjustments that we made as a part of the audit, and there were no audits, or rather, no adjustments that surfaced during the course of the audit internally that were provided to us during the part of the audit. And again, that speaks very highly of your department in that their books were closed, everything was tied out, we didn't find anything that we needed to report to you. And we also go through materiality thresholds relative to the audit. And if we find items that fall between certain materiality levels, we call those the uncorrected, and we call those past adjustments. We are required now under the standards to report to you those past adjustments. So, those are adjustments that maybe surfaced as a part of the audit, but we pass on it because either they were immaterial or they weren't significant. The key there is oftentimes what you find is you may have individual adjustments that may not be significant, but when you combine them all together, they may become significant. In our case, we didn't have any of those to report to you today, so I'm happy to say that we did not. Significant accounting estimates, this is just to remind you that with any estimates, those are a little more difficult to audit. It's not like confirming the bank account balance with the bank, or confirming debt, or actually looking at the fixed assets. Estimates, we are required to review your management's policy in those estimates. And for you, that would be important for your estimated useful life of depreciation, estimated reserves for collectibility, or estimated other reserves that you may have as a part of the audit. We've looked at those, we did not have any issues with that. No significant disagreements with management. You have not consulted with any other accountants. We did receive written representation from management, I skipped over that, which is a part of the audit. And of course, the key element with any audit is that we are independent relative to the city. Turning to page four, this is a lot of information, but it's got the condensed statement of net position. It's three columns, the government activities for years 12 and 13, the business-type activities, and the totals. And I'm just going to highlight a few things. The first two columns on the governmental activities, you can see that your total assets decreased from $78 million to $77.8 million. It was a small decrease, about $495,000, which represented about 6.3% of those total assets. Following down on those two columns, you've got your liabilities. Again, we don't see many, much change in the liabilities in the governmental activities, and same with the net position. So, overall, you had a decrease of $125,000 in your total net position on the governmental activities from $75,000.166 to $75,041. The activity that occurred this past year in fiscal 13, where in the middle two columns, which is the business-type activities. And there, you can see quite a big increase in your current and other assets, that line at the top. You increased from $20.7 million to $53.5 million. And the bulk of that represented debt proceeds that you had received that were sitting in cash and investments at the end of the year. So, your total assets increased about $40 million, which was 70% from the prior year. Looking in the middle section where you've got your liabilities, you can see where the other half of that entry is, so to speak. In your liabilities, under the due more than in one year, you see that you went from $6.9 million in debt to $43.2 million. So, there's the increase that you had in the debt. And you had, the city had issued this past year fiscal 13, the Utility Systems Revenue Bond Series 2013A, which was $35.7 million. You also issued the Utility Systems Grant Anticipation Note Series 2013, where you had draws of about $7.6 million, principal payments on that debt of $820,000. So, the net balance was $6.7 million. And then the city's Utility System Bond Anticipation Note Series 2007A was refunded by the new bond when you wrapped that all in together. So, looking at your fund, your net position, you can see in, again, in the middle two columns, that the business-type activities went from $48 million to $51.9. It was about a 3.8, rather, $3.8 million increase. And then the columns to the right are the summation of both of those information. I'm not going to go through those in detail. On the next page, this is the statement of activities. Again, it's entity-wide, it would include all the activities for the city. And you can see that your expenses, which is the first column on the left, these are your expenses for the governmental activities. So, you had about $22.9 million in expenses. And just to compare that with the prior year, it was about $22.1 million. Now, moving across the page, you see you've got your expenses, a governmental, of 22. And then charges for services, those would be revenues that you received from that. So, you had $3.2 in your charges for services. Your operating grants and contributions were about $630,000. Your capital grants and contributions were up quite a bit from last year. It was about $1 million more than last year. And that had to do with some grants that you received in the transportation, $603,000 and $380,000 in the culture and recreation. So, your total column shows the deficit, if you would. So, you had $22 million in expenses offset by these revenues. So, your shortfall was still $17 million. And in comparison with the prior years, it's pretty comparable with the prior years. 2011 was $16.8 without the additional revenues. 2012 was $18.4, and this year, as I said, was $17.9. The middle section has to do with the business-type activities, and those are your enterprise funds. And these funds should be self-sustaining, their revenues should support the expenses, and you should probably generate some sort of profit, if that's the right word, to have built-in funds for infrastructure and so forth, so you can finance some of that. And looking at the business-type activities, in the expenses, your total expenses were about $16.9 million, which is up about $1 million and a half from the prior year. And that's because you had wholesale water purchased from Pinellas County this past year due to the meter adjustment. So, that created some additional expenses. The next column would be your charges for services. So, you have the expenses in the enterprise funds, and then you charge for those services. So, the services that you charged were $19.3 million, in comparison with last year of $18 million. So, you had an increase there, but that's because you had your water rate increases this year of 10% and your sewer rate increase of 3%. So, again, moving across the line there, you can see your capital grants and contributions. You had some money from SWF Mod that you were able to use. You had $2.2 million overall in grants. And then looking to the column for 2013, you ended up the year with a surplus, if you would, of $4.7 million on the enterprise funds as comparison to the prior year of $5.3 and $2.7. So, you can kind of see how that's changing over the years. And then on the bottom three rows, I just added information in there... And then on the bottom three rows, I just added information in there to show the prior years, 13, 12, and 11, and the number that I'm focusing on is the one that's highlighted in yellow, that the totals for 2013 was a deficit, if you would, of 13.1. Deficit's not the right word, it just means that with the expenses that you incur, the charges for services, without the general revenues to help support those expenses, right now it was at 13 million. So when you turn to the next page, now we add back to that, this is what helps the shortfall. So you've got these expenses, you've got your revenues, but now we've got the property taxes, utility taxes, sales tax, and so forth. And you can say, see that you have a continuing decline in property taxes. 2011, you had property taxes of 7.5 million, last year it was 7.1, and this year it's 6.9. And that's due to the continuing decline in property values. We're seeing with other governmental cities that we audit, because we audit many of those, they're in the same boat. We're hoping to see the turn relative to the increased property values, but right now you're still in that situation. If you add up all the taxes on that page, it's about 14.3 million, which is pretty comparable to last year, which was 14.2 million. So your total general revenues for 2013 were 16.9. And that number I mentioned on the previous page, which was at $13 million, which is highlighted, we carry that forward to this page, because you had a shortfall of 13 million, you had the 16.9 that came in from other general revenue sources, so you ended up the year with a surplus of 3.7 million. And in comparison with 12, 2012 and 2011, you can see where the change. And to just point out the big swing, if you see the column 2012, the line item called miscellaneous, last year you had 912,000, and just to remind you, that was the sale of the property to the hospital. So you were able to get about a million dollars last year, and that pretty much accounts for the swing in the last year to this year of about a million dollars. Turning to page seven, this is just on the general fund. Governments have a tendency to focus primarily on the general fund. And looking at the general fund, you can see your revenues are pretty comparable with the prior year. It's down 1.9% from the prior year, it's 17.9 million compared to 18.2 million in the previous year. Looking at your expenditures, your expenditures increased about, close to 4.5% from 19 million to 20 million, and primarily in public safety, which is your biggest line item, department expenses. You had an increase there due to increased salaries and overtime, and capital outlay was the other area that we had an increase in, and that resulted from some carryover projects that you had been working on in the prior year. So overall, looking at your change in your fund balance at the bottom, you had a swing of about a million dollars from an increase of 283,000 this year to a decrease of 872. Turning to the next page, this is just some analysis of your fund balance percentages. And in looking at 2013, and again, I'm just focusing on the general fund. So you can see to the far right-hand column, your unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures is about 45.6%, and in comparison with previous years, you can see. So the first column is your total expenditures, again, on the general fund, your total fund balance, how much of that is unassigned fund balance, and what your percentage is, and that's just a number to kind of focus on and maybe keep in front of you as you work with your budgets and you work with your expenses. On the next page, this is a follow-up on the comments and recommendations that we had made previous year. Last year, we had a comment that you had a significant deficiency, which was not good, in the information technology area. You had received a security assessment, and we had come before you and carried over that comment a couple of years in a row, that you had not addressed all the recommendations that had been brought to your attention. Some of those included implementing a disaster recovery plan, having backup procedures, or reviewing the backup procedures, user access controls, and modifying and changing the passwords. So I'm here today to say that you have corrected those items, which is a good thing, because you were kind of creeping into, I think, three years of having the same comment, which the Florida Auditor General doesn't, does not like. And so you've corrected that, and you've got a few items that are slated to be corrected or finished in fiscal year 2014. Other recommendations that we had this year as a part of the audit, I'm sorry, last year was the bank reconciliations. Last year, I spoke to you that you have, the bank reconciliations were being timely reviewed, and that's a key element for control purposes, from cash and controls and fraudulent activity. And although they were being timely reviewed in a 30-day period, we were just not seeing the evidence of that review, so documented on the, on the bank reconciliations, initialed and dated and so forth. So this year, when we took a look at the bank reconciliations, we did not have any concerns or problems with that, so that item had been corrected. And then the other comment that we made last year that we recommended was that the server room generator and access to the server room, we felt like was vulnerable, and it's our understanding that that has, the generator has been purchased or is budgeted to be purchased at fiscal 14, and that you will correct that issue as well. Because that is very critical to you and all the information that you maintain here at the city, and we want to make sure that those are all properly protected. Turning to page 10, and just closing as far as what's coming up down the pike for you, well, you know, you, when we audit the financial statements, we audit them in accordance with the financial audit standards, but also government auditing standards. And coming up in fiscal 15, 2015, is GASB number 68, I just want to call your attention to that. That is accounting and financial reporting for pensions. A lot of the cities are starting to take a look at that, you can early implement that next year if you so choose, but the crust of the standard is to require the city to recognize the long-term obligation for its pension benefit obligations. And a lot of the cities, that could be a significant number that's going to be thrown on the balance sheet, so to speak, and eat up some of those reserves. So there's, I know that Ari and Ron are working with your actuaries and are working with those to determine what those dollar amounts are going to be, and what the impact's going to be based on the actuarial studies. So that, that would be one. 71 will be implemented at the same time 68 is. I kind of skipped over 66 and 67. We don't see 66 being an issue. 67 is really a standard for pension plan reporting, not, not your part of the reporting. And then on the bottom, under number three, they haven't issued this standard yet, but OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits, they are going to be rolling out, and they should have come out in April, based on looking at the GASB website. They were supposed to issue this month, April of 2014, the exposure draft for that, and they estimate that the issue date will be in June. Pretty much what this standard will do, will piggyback GASB 68, so it's going to require the same thing on the OPEB calculations that you would have to require on the pension calculation. So I just call that to your attentions to make sure that your finance department is on top of those things, and they know that they're coming down the pike, and they're going to be prepared to implement those adjustments when they have to come into play. And that's all I have, and I'll take questions or any other comments. I didn't mean to take up too much of your time.
Well, this is definitely important, and we're glad that you brought this to us. I'd just say that I would like is if we could maybe get this prior to the meeting so that we can have a chance to really digest and then have some questions that we can ask. But just looking at page eight, and I know you talked about the balance of percentages of the total expenditures has gone down to 45.6, but we still, if I'm looking at this right, still have a NAMI and 178,000 of fund balance. So we're still pretty good as far as what we still have.
Yes, I have other cities that that percentage is like 10%, and yours is 45. And I did want to point out that this is just a summary of what's in the CAFR, the comprehensive annual reporting, you should have received the CAFR already.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Tarpani?
Just a, just a comment manner, and it's a follow-up on what you said. I know for, for certain that in years past, I've asked for this report, as well as Commissioner Larson, to be provided to us prior to the meeting, and to me, it's unacceptable. And I'd like to put this on our first agenda for discussion of the budget so we can review it further. Thank you.
Commissioner Bather?
Again, the same thing with, with, with page eight, and I'll leave most of this commentary for the, the budget season, but our reserves are declining, and I think we have put the brakes on that with this year's budgeting, but that is a number we need, we need, we need to watch. I know some cities are, or most cities are much worse than we are, but I hold us to our own standard with that. And I would hate to see our reserve balance drop much, much below this. So I hope in, in the budget season, we can hopefully get some good news of what actually came of this current budget year, and then what's to come for next year. Thank you.
Did you have any comments, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Well, we definitely thank you for your report, and we'll continue to digest it. Any public comments on this item?
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yes, it is unacceptable. This was the only item that I couldn't click on, on this entire agenda, when I went online to review it on Friday. This brings us back to what I mentioned to you before. We should make it mandatory to have these agendas posted two weeks in advance. If we, if the public had two weeks to review this, they could have questions for this woman, just like the commissioners could have questions for this woman. Two weeks, and there was no hurry at it, I don't see what the rush to put it on tonight's agenda, which is already pretty full. What was the urgency? Why not wait? When they're ready, post it, give the whole public two weeks to review it? Just like every item on here should have been posted two weeks prior to this meeting. But it was only Friday that it was posted.
I might as well start now. One of the things that I'm going to ask of you tonight, when we have someone up there, we don't have clapping, we don't have booing, everybody have a chance to get up, and if you want to second what he has to say by getting up and talking, you can do that. I appreciate that, and we can deal with this in an orderly manner.
But it's going to take one of you commissioners to ask the city manager to put that on as a discussion item, to discuss whether or not you want to have two weeks to review this material, or if you're okay with just trying to get through it over the weekend before the meeting. I mean, you deserve two weeks to review this stuff, as well as the public, so that they can discuss it with their neighbors. And then this room would be full like this all the time. Instead of people having to rush together and try to figure out what's on the agenda, what items there, and then to get the details, they could be well-prepared here. And that's one of the main, that's one of the things that a lot of people are here to talk about. Your main complaint to them is going to be, well, did you read the stuff? Did you go see the plans? All that kind of stuff. So you can't fault them if the communication is not there. You got to, it's two ways. You got to provide it, information for the public in order for the public to respond and understand what they're talking about. So don't criticize them for not knowing about an item entirely if you didn't provide the information, and so that's the real issue here. Please, one of you, stand up, be a hero for your town, put it on as a discussion item. Two weeks, doesn't have to be two weeks, but it's got to be more than just a few days. And to something as important as this, an audit? I couldn't even tell what the audit was about. I thought it was about that shoreline project, because there is a mandatory audit needs to be done for that. It's in the contract. So I thought that's what it was, and I was looking forward to finding out. And when I got here and found out that it was this, I would love to have read it and come up with some questions about that, instead of having to readdress this issue. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments on this item? Again, thank you. Do we need a motion to accept this? Can we do it?
Just a presentation.
Thank you. We're now going to our consent agenda, and that's minutes, April 1st, 2014, regular session, outgoing board. April 1st, 2014, regular session, new board. 10 is satisfaction release of liens, 11 attorney fees, trash, mats, day known, LLP invoice number 45392. B is Thompson, Sizemore, Gonzalez, and hearing LLP invoice number 74952. 12 is special events, Boys and Girls Club Beach Party, May 10th, 2014, and this applicant has withdrawn this and will bring it back at a later time and date. B is Merchants Association Food Truck Rally, May 10th, 2014. And C is Helen Ellis Foundation Beach Dubai U 5K Run Walk on June 7th, 2014. 13 is authorized mayor to execute in a local agreement for creation of the Metropolitan Planning Organization. 14 is select George F. Young Incorporated RFP, Q number 140030S-S-JJ, Survey Services, Continuing Contract. 15 is renew file number 110023-C-CM, Banking Services, utilize the City of St. Petersburg RFP number 7063. 16 is approved local business tax application, 806 Seminole Boulevard. Any item anyone would like to pull? Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Are there any public comments on any of these items?
Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Can you let us know what item 16, approved local business tax application, Seminole Boulevard, because that's a residential area, R100. We need to know what it is, please.
It's for four-student scuba instruction in the swimming pool at that residence. Am I correct? Scuba teaching in the swimming pool at the residence.
Because they want to have more than two students, it requires the Board of Commissioners to review and approve it, so they're limited to have four students at one time, it's for scuba instruction.
There are no other public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Commissioner Bather?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Special consent item number 17, award bid number 140048-B-CM, fuel, ethanol, and diesel.
The next two items that are on special consent are only on there for the amount. They're budgeted, they're bid for the first one, it's a Tarpon Springs company that won the bid. So again, the only reason it's on special consent, because of the amount, $500,000, and move for you to approve.
Anyone have any additional questions?
I would just say that I'm pleased to see that FNY, Tarpon Springs Company, was able to continue with this bid and, and got the bid for a period of five years.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Commissioner Bather?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 18, unauthorized purchase of a vacuum truck through the Florida Shelfs Association Contract, number 13-11-09-04.
Again, this is on there because of price, not to see 350,194. It's budgeted in the stormwater fund, and it's a vacuum truck for our stormwater needs within the city.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any public comments on this item? Roll call it.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
Commissioner Bather?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarpani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 19A is Sponge Dock Improvement Project. This is to terminate project plan as presented in the 90% construction plans at December 17th, 2013, Board of Commissioners Regular Session. And turn this over to the city manager, that should be trying to eliminate something that everyone seemed to be a little bit more uncomfortable with, but if you can kind of explain your...
Just, just a short summation, as was stated here. It is obvious that on this issue and with the present plans, we're not going to be able to come to consensus. There's too much division. All of you have seen and heard all that division, so it... much division. All of you have seen and heard all that division. So it has come to the point that the recommendation, and it's a two-phase, obviously, we're going to get to the second phase where there's something I think we can do about that. But before we get to deciding on something different to do, we need to terminate that. And by that, I mean that we, things have been pretty much put on hold probably two and a half or three weeks ago while we were anticipating this. And I was meeting with citizens about it, so we really haven't been moving towards anything. But obviously, we can't stop anything until the commission ends what was approved the 17th. So the intention is asking you to end this, and then immediately after you do that, we will formally end all bidding, all permitting processes that have been begun on it. And again, there are some elements to the plan that may be done at the future, but I can guarantee you, as I made sure I put in writing, that they will not include docks or the amphitheater concept, their change in the middle of docks. Those two will not come up in the future, and we will look at other things. The alternative proposal that you're going to see next is a streetscape project that we'll talk about then. But again, it's in the best interest of all of the city and the residents to move a different direction. And I'm asking for your board approval to end the previous approved method of proceed, and then we can talk in the next item about some elements and some compromise that don't seem to be controversial. I think we can get pretty much universal consensus to move forward with, with the assistance of the citizens involved in the process.
So just to clarify, this terminates all of the projects that have come forward so far?
Yes. And that will be done immediately tomorrow if it's approved by the commission tonight. They've been put on hold, but they will officially be ended tomorrow.
All right. Showed entertaining motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
With that, are there any public comments on this item?
Mary Coburn, 15 East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs, Florida. First, I want to express my thanks to Commissioners Banther, Terpenny, and Larson, and to City Manager Mark Lacouris for stopping this project in mid-March when the issues of the federal channel were brought to your attention. It requires leadership to stop and turn around something like this rather than letting it move forward. The community relies on your leadership to protect the assets of our city and to be good stewards. I have 577 signatures of Tarpon Springs residents who are opposed to the Sponge Docks Improvement Project that was put forth. The petition started March 14th or thereabouts and stopped when the city manager stopped the project. So within two weeks, we had 577 signatures. So that shows a very strong opposition in the community to the project, and I want to provide that to you. Also, there was a letter from the Pan-Hellenic Federation that is also against this project. Our group, Save the Sponge Docks, opposed the project because, number one, the loss of safe navigation in the Anclot River and the Sponge Docks area and the Turning Basin, also because it affected the federal channel jeopardizing our status as a commercial seaport, the loss of function for the sponge divers on the dock because of the amphitheater and their loss of parking, and the lack of conformity to the historical appearance of the Sponge Docks, which was clearly stated in the concerns of the Historical Society memo to you. I've discussed each of these issues with you individually. What concerns me a great deal is that you, as commissioners, were blindsided by the issues of navigation and the federal channel setbacks. You rely on the information you are provided to make informed decisions, and there was a failure in the process in this case. Many citizens in the audience want to know how we came to spend so much money on something that should not have been considered. We are very, very fortunate to have an asset like the federal channel. It's rare in the United States and in Florida for such a small town to have a deep-water commercial port. Being designated a federal channel requires the government and the Coast Guard to spend millions of dollars to maintain and keep it safe, something the city would have to do if we lost that designation, if the city could even afford to do that. We came perilously close with this project, which would have eventually led to the demise of the sponge industry and the commercial fishing in Tarpon Springs. And it would have changed our identity completely. The very nature of it is contrary to the city's own laws that were put forth to protect the working waterfront. So I ask you to look into this and determine what needs to happen to prevent it from happening again. But I am grateful for your leadership in stopping and turning it around without requiring lawsuits and the waste of more taxpayer money. I think it showed political courage on the part of the commission and the city manager, and I applied you for your leadership in this case. As a group, we have discussed this with Mr. Lacouris. We want to get behind his beautification plan, lighting, landscaping, benches, from one end of the Sponge Docks to the other. Everyone will benefit, not just one particular part of the docks. And I think it will renew the docks, and we can be, all be proud of them. The atmosphere will improve, and we were able to do it without giving up our identity or our purpose. The only thing we ask moving forward is that the Dodecanese Boulevard property owners and the businesses be given an opportunity to help select the main elements and be given adequate notice to do so and active notice, letters, phone calls, rather than a website. So Mayor Archie, on behalf of myself and the Save the Sponge Docks group, which is in the audience, we are happy with Mr. Lacouris's plan, and we truly thank you for beautifying the Sponge Docks. Should I have, I'll give them to the clerk. Thank you.
I wore my T-shirt this evening, just in case you didn't know why I was here.
Name and address for the record, please.
Athena Sardulius, 634 East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs. Good evening, Mayor Archie, Commissioners, Mr. Lacouris. I wish to thank Commissioners Tarpani, Banther, and Larson for recognizing the urgency of stopping the Sponge Docks redevelopment plan. The three of you truly listened to our concerns and responded. I thank our city manager, Mr. Lacouris, for proposing a new plan we can all agree on. I have one concern remaining, and it pertains to our Anclot River federal channel. Our citizens' group, by consulting experts in our local Pinellas County community, was able to obtain pertinent information concerning the waterway, navigation safety, Army Corps of Engineer permitting, procedures, et cetera. It seems to me that someone, somewhere, in one of the three professional entities associated with this project, being our city staff, design consultants, or maybe engineering consultants, should have also had access to this same information. I implore you, our commissioners and city manager, to please look into this matter, find out how this happened, and correct the situation so this sort of thing does not happen again. The Anclot River federal channel must be protected. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that possibly 1,000 jobs depend on it directly and indirectly. Thank you so much.
Hi. Mayor Archie, chief, and commissioners. I'm not used to talking in front of people, so just bear with me. I just want to let you all know that...
I'm part of the Save the Sponge Docks?
I'm part of the Save the Sponge Docks. I reside in Holiday, but I keep my commercial fishing boat at 1,003 Roosevelt Avenue, Tarpon Springs, called the Fat Cat. Just to let you all know how important this was to me, I'm a tugboat captain, and at 2:00 this morning, I was airlifted off my tugboat and flown to Newark Airport to get here on time for this meeting. Cost me $5,000. Five grand. Okay, if you don't mind, I know I've got four minutes, just kick me when I'm there. I have an affidavit here that I had written to the Coast Guard and to the Army Corps of Engineers. I have a paragraph here explaining who I am and what I, my experiences are. I really don't like to read that stuff about me, but I'm right experienced on the waterways. Okay. Tarpon Springs is a deep-water port. Numerous vessels over 100-foot utilize this river in various descriptions and job relations, including shrimp boats, tugboats, sponge boats, commercial fishing boats, excursion boats, and party boats. The Anclot River has a federal channel going its length to the Turn Basin before the alternate 19 bridge. This Turn Basin was designed, then dredged, to accommodate the large vessels in the river that cannot turn around due to their length or draft in the length of the river. There's only one spot they could turn around. The Coast Guard assures that the federal channel is marked for the safety of all boaters that use the river. If it wasn't for the buoys and day markers, boaters would run aground constantly due to the shifting bars and spoiling, growing spoil islands. I know, because they run aground all the time with the buoys there. Vessels from all over the eastern seaboard and Gulf states use the docks here for fuel. They sell their wares, they buy groceries, and all these activities impact this town and businesses in a positive way. Some vessels are extremely large and can only get into port on special tides and need the safety of a marked channel to get in. That's why we have to have this channel. We don't want it to go anywhere. Once in, most vessels need to travel the length of the channel to reach the Turn Basin in order to use a reciprocal course out of the river as they are unable to turn around anywhere else. I know for a fact that these visiting vessels, and some that are homeported here, would have to leave for good, means they would have to find homeport somewhere else if they were not able to turn their vessels around. It is too dangerous to back a huge boat out of the way, all the way out the channel. This channel must never be closed and cannot be closed because it's the lifeblood of many businesses, like the seafood, sponges, fuel, boat buildings, dredge companies, aside from the large commercial units that ply the river, commercial boats. The Anclot River is also home to thousands of pleasure crafts now, including speedboats, yachts, personal auto craft, sailboats, and now a huge influx of kayakers. They drive us crazy. All these, all these smaller vessels use the same channel as the larger ones. Everybody uses it, everybody has a right to use it. I'm going to go crook here. The Coast Guard has put out a publication in the year of 1972 for collision regulations called the Rules of the Road. Everybody's kind of heard the Rules of the Road. It was put together by the International Maritime Organization to prevent collisions of one or two more vessels. In the Anclot River, like anywhere else in the world, no vessel has the absolute right of way. And that's true. I'm a tugboat captain, I have unlimited master's license. You never, ever, ever have the absolute right of way. You're either a stand-on vessel or a giveaway vessel. I won't get into that, but read the book. Such a vessel proceeding along a narrow channel or fairway, this vessel must keep the starboard. But docks there, can't do that. The channel in the Anclot River is a very narrow channel and is considered, by the rules, a narrow channel or fairway. Another rule which must be followed is that small vessels or sailing vessels must not impede larger vessels, which can only navigate within a narrow channel. These rules can be found in the Rules of the Road. In addition to the rules, a body of legal precedents and a case law in Admiralty Courts have been published about this. So you can look that up. Almost done. Shrimp boats are huge vessels, and sponge boats are somewhat larger than most recreational craft. The average beam of a shrimp boat, I figure, is 20 feet. The average beam of a sponge boat is 13 feet. At the location of the proposed boardwalk extension to the Sponge Docks, the property owners across the river has a, what? Riparatan? Thank you? Rights and, I don't know, the submerged, I didn't go to college, I'm sorry, folks. And submerged land, but I did write it, I swear. That leases permit moorings to shrimp boats at least three abreast. That's three abreast. Sponges are permitted to moor two abreast at that Sponge Dock. So with this eight-foot extension and the tide poles, the extension pushes the sponges out another 10 foot into the river narrowing. This would allow mooring for boats to take up 96 feet of the channel overall. How can the 1972 collision regulations be followed when boats cannot safely pass one another in the Anclot River? Impossible.
That little bell that you heard?
Yes.
That was your four minutes, but because you spent $5,000 to get here.
If you could just... Mayor, I, thank you. I did pay five grand.
I believe you. I believe you. That's why I'm going to give you a chance to wrap it up.
Mary spent $5,000.
Right?
All right, I'm real quick, just a couple, Mayor. I'm sure I'm entertaining here. The Anclot River has a strong ebb tide and flood tide, that means in and out during a 24-hour period. What's that? Oh, okay. Thank you. What does that mean?
My name is Jason Sardulius, 634 East Orange Street. I'd like to allot my four minutes to Captain O'Keefe.
Huh?
What I'd like to tell you all is that anybody that want to talk can talk. But what we have is a motion on the floor...
Oh.
To do what you all want to do, but if you want to talk about it, we could talk as long as you want to talk.
I only had about 30 seconds. Okay, here we go. Anclot River has a strong ebb and flow tide, 24 hours. Tends to be much stronger than different phases of the moon and storms. We all know this, you know, when it floods and drives everybody nuts. The dock extension and transient dock proposal will make safe navigation all that more difficult due to these tides. Boats cannot stop like a car and will not just be able to pull over and get out of the way. I'm very concerned that the architect of this project may not have been properly advised regarding any know-how or intellect of the Coast Guard or professional matters in the manner of safe navigation of a blocked channel. A channel is considered blocked when vessels cannot pass safely. The Army Corps of Engineers issues permits for docks and is responsible for maintaining a controlling depth of channels, but they are not here to enforce navigational rules. Putting a dock in a narrow channel or fairway is reckless and unconscionable. It shows a total lack of judgment and inability to comprehend the dangers to the maritime community and a total lack of respect for the published collision regulations, 1972. These rules are not guidelines, nor are they up for an architect's interpretation. These are laws. I recommend that the United States Coast Guard St. Petersburg sector be notified immediately of this proposal, not the Miami office, not the one that is out of sight and out of mind. They need to be brought up to speed. This river needs to have a maritime law enforcement presence also. The US Coast Guard has a vast area of responsibility and cannot be patrolling the river every day. How about a harbor master or a fireboat that should be employed at the very least on the weekends? The operator should have a maritime law enforcement and firefighting and EMT training. Okay, thank you. I feel strongly that these docks are built, there'll be problems, issues, and damage done. I love this river and the people of the community. I don't want to see anyone hurt, property damaged, and I don't want to see shrimp boats damaging my own boat because they can't utilize the Turn Basin. This is my interpretation of the law. Oh, it is not my interpretation of the law, nor is it my opinion. I'm very willing to meet with anybody who'd like to chat, and I thank you for your time. Mayor, you're all right. You're all right.
There are no other public comments, we'll go to roll call. Oh, yes, sir. If you all would come on down, I know I got a couple people that know they want to talk. If they would just come down from the back. Doctor?
Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. I see Mr. Belirson in the audience, so I'm not going to take credit for what I'm going to say, because years ago, he said this, and I've tried to beat this drum, I said it last time. And this gentleman here, I don't recall his name or if he gave it, but he's reiterating something that I think is being overlooked in this whole issue. You know, we're talking about the Dodecanese side of the river, and we're talking about streetscapes and fixing it up. And as Mr. Belirson years ago said, you know, we're not trying to create a Disney World. And I've mentioned it last time, and I'm going to mention it again. We need to refocus our efforts on the north side of the river to find ways to make the port more viable. We need to find ways to help the shrimpers and the spongers and the people who repair the boats and supply the boats and Mr. Cox's seafood. I don't know what happened to his plan, but it was years ago, it came up before us, and it's still, you know, we need to find ways to help these people on the docks who create the image of the docks that people originally came to. I mean, yes, Greek culture's there because the spongers came and they brought that with them. But before that, the fishers and the hunters and the Bahamians and the Bermudians and everybody else who came, but made tarpon the port. So again, I will reiterate that somewhere along the line, either a workshop needs to be gone or reinvigorate the old Working Waterfront Committee that we had, and find ways to focus some of the attention on the north side of the river. It's nice to pretty up the things on the south side and benches and places to sit and some trees to keep a little shade, but if everything on the north side of the river disappears, then you know what you'll have left. And lastly, where I have a moment, I would like to reiterate the fact that I did find that in the book outside and online, there was no backup material, not only for the audit, but I think a lot of people are here for number 12. for the audit, but I think a lot of people are here for number twenty-two, which is the reload gun, and, uh, I'm quite surprised there's no staff report in there about that to give us some information. So, I know Mr. Robowski has beaten the drum about two weeks, uh, fair compromise would be one or something, but, uh, you have a lot of people here who would like to have information ahead of time with regards to some of the issues we would like to discuss. Thank you.
Anita Prost, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. I wanna thank our city manager, commissioner, for, our, our three commissioners for putting this on the agenda to put a stop. When the dock was built during my term, we knew where the lines were, we knew about the river. All that information is here in City Hall, and it's proven by the April thirteenth letter from Costa Vaticiotis. Y'all were sideswiped on this, and you need to find out why. You need to find out why all the information wasn't given to you. This is why we used to have work sessions. Work session one week on controversial issues and the next week it would be voted on so the public could come in here. You did away with, uh, work sessions, and that's a very bad thing. It also shows on the budget tonight. Yes, we're very busy people, but we, as citizens, have a right to have a work session on these issues and hear and let you know what we, uh, want, what we understand and get our answers. So please consider work sessions again. But this April thirteenth letter proved a fact. Someone didn't come forth with all the information, it was held from you. You need to find out and correct that and put out hard discipline on this. This is wrong because we look up to you as our, uh, representatives and we trust you to take care of our community, and this proves that we almost lost something very important down there. So, you know, we don't always wanna come here, but work sessions are very important on special issues. Yes, we have a big crowd, and to show your support, would everyone here on this, on the Sponge Project, please stand up so they can see how many people have come to give these commissioners support? Stand up so they'll know that we are behind them and their decision and what the city manager has proposed. Very important. We're not against Mr. Hoffman, we're very proud of him in our community, but we just didn't like the plan, and we had to save what is so important to this community and the historic aspect of it. Thank you.
Christopher Boski, one six zero two Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, three four six eight nine. Yes, I, again, this goes back to, I mean, with that information that the tugboat gentleman gave us tonight, how is it that we weren't presented that before? We're a city on a river. I assumed when I first thought it was a good idea, I looked at your plans, I thought they were, it was a pretty good idea, but that was going on the assumption that my government was doing their homework. Did nobody think to review Army Corps regulations? Did nobody think to check out waterway regulations? What is our government doing if it's not doing that? How long has this town been here? Somebody knows that stuff. Somebody could find that stuff out. So who was supposed to do it and why did they not do it? I mean, only reason why I started to oppose the project that you designed was because I talked to the sponge merchants, uh, day in and day out over the last seven months, and they finally, you know, they convinced me that it wasn't a good idea for various reasons. And I just, in the back of my mind, I never once thought, how is it that we have paid engineers on staff in this city? How could they not know? How could they do that? How could it be a mystery to anybody in this town? I mean, it's, and it goes back to the information. I mean, it's gotta be a two-way street, you gotta provide information and then, guess what? If somebody in the city dropped the ball, a man like the tugboat captain can come forward and help you out. That's why you gotta have workshop sessions. That's why you gotta have the agenda posted earlier so people have time in their busy lives. I mean, they, they hire you, that's why we have a representative form of government because true democracy is very difficult for working people. So we hire you to come in here and we trust you to do your homework, but how can you do your homework if you've only got four days to review that material? Forty-seven pages for one consent agenda item I printed out so that I could read it on the shoreline project that so many people are unhappy with. Took a long time to read that information, to find out that the federal government basically says the contractor should be stuck with that. If it goes over budget, that's on them, and yet we're paying for cost overruns. I mean, it, stuff like that. How is it that the city's not providing information enough in a timely manner and not doing their own homework when it comes to projects of this size? Over a million dollar project, I'm just stunned. How does that sort of stuff happen? There's gotta be an answer, and I think that the people in this room deserve an answer. Thank you.
Did you wanna say something, Mr. Hoffman? Cause I'm, I'm gonna close public comments, uh, you know, I, I think that everybody that says it, and I've asked you, you know, once about clapping, and you know, some people tell me about civility, and I talk about just the way that it's home training, you know. I ask that we not be clapping, you know, because I don't say anything, then we continue to do it, and we have another item that could be a little controversial, and I don't wanna have it one clapping, the other one clapping, nobody's booing, but you're always welcome to come up to the podium and talk. You know, if you, four minutes, you need a little bit more time, I don't mind, give me a little bit more time. Yes, sir, Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. There's some, there've been some, well, like, first of all, I'm not really prepared as a, a big follow-up to the comments that were made because we would need to do, uh, that, that's a whole, a long, a lengthy explanation. But I, but there are some general comments I wanna made while I sitting there listening to this, and I think, first of all, I want everyone to know the process that we went through for this, and particularly with the city staff that brought us on board to do this project. It was open information constantly from, uh, Mr. Chapman and, and Renee, that it was, it was, and the, and the city manager and Mr. DePotsqua, that it was always supposed to be, we're gonna try to do some improvements for the docks and get them what they want. We had four workshops, um, one exclusively for the boaters, and each time we would modify our thoughts. We took input, first of all, we met with all the commissioners, we met with, gosh, I don't know, I'll, I'll say hundreds, literally, uh, people that were involved. They tried so hard to try to get the word out, handing out cards, trying to get people to come to these meetings because we wanted public input. And the, the, I've, the idea that we were trying to hide anything or that somebody was trying to sneak something through from either the staff's side or the design's side just is not accurate at all. We wanted to please, my job was to make as many people po, happy as possible and bring consensus. We thought we were doing that in the first three meetings, um, then the third meeting, you know, everybody, we had the, the idea, we had that pedestrian plaza closing the street because that's what the first two workshops wanted us to do. We changed that, no additional cost to the city. We, we made all those modifications, we said, okay, if they don't want it, then we don't do it. I think it was a good idea, I think it would've made a stronger dock, it would've made us more of a destination, but, okay, that's, we yielded to, to public comment, to the, to the loud people, quite honestly. And so, so we've made these modifications, this sponge, we originally talked about trying to take it back, the boats to the original ninety-degree parking as they were historically. Well, the boaters said, no, they don't want that, the current's too strong, they wanna be, you know, parallel parked. Okay, we changed that. So we just constantly made changes to try to be, you know, um, to bring in the input from those workshops, from the public and from the boaters. You know, so, all of those changes, um, we thought we were doing pretty good. We also brought it to the commission, uh, we had, I believe, unanimous support from the commissioners when we brought the preliminary plans in. We had, um, again, we're going back to those works, first workshop was November of eleven, by the way. But, you know, and then the, um, uh, so if, we had approval at the preliminary, we brought it back again when we had the approval for, uh, the construction drawings, and then the ideas that we were going to have when we had the final bids in. So there's been just, it's not like this project hasn't been vetted. I think that the, the idea of Mr. Blyris, who I consider him a friend, I think he's, he's right on target in terms of trying to say that the water, the working waterfront is what people are interested in, and that's what puts us on the map. In my view, putting the, the, this dock out there, uh, along brings the wood, the character, the richness of the dock instead of just concrete slab and seawall. Can I get a few minutes?
Give me that few more minutes.
Okay. Um, so that's, you know, that the idea we were trying to, you know, bring brick back to the streets and things that were there originally, these historic pieces, uh, we also, with that dock, we were trying to give this, the, the boaters, the sponge boys, more room to, to work so that they had a place to put out their sponges and, and, and wash them, rinse them, it goes through the dock, all that kinda thing we were doing, we thought because we were doing the right thing. We also, um, anyway, I think what, the, part of the sadness for me is, um, the misinformation that's going on. You've been hearing a lot, it's all, a lot of it's based on Costa Vaticiotis's, uh, report. We find that there's a lot of inaccuracies about that. Everybody's taking this, this, his word as gospel, and I think if you give us a chance, there's a whole nother side. URS, um, who was our consultant for our docks, the idea that we've blinds, swipe, uh, blindsided you, or sideswiped, what did you, what did Anita say? You know, that there's some pretty strong accusations against, um, our credibility, and I, and I think that needs to be resolved, and I, I can't, we were going through a process, URS was going through a process, which is a normal permitting process, and we can get into details of that at another workshop. To say that we were not playing by the, the rules was not at all accurate. I think we were very close to a permit. And it's also, if everybody was so dead gum concerned that, that we've, we've messed up the city because we're not, they won't be able to get a permit for this project, why wouldn't they just simply let it die because it can't get a permit? Or are we concerned that maybe it can get a permit because maybe it does follow the federal guidelines? Maybe it does follow the SWIFTMUD. We were also modifying things, uh, in the permitting process. You're always, it's a negotiation process. Anybody that's tried to build a dock, you know, you go down and you, and you talk to your neighbors and then you, you make modifications to that. The little dock that's, that we were trying, one of, one of the many, many comments was the number of people that wanted a place for kayakers to get out of the water. There's no place to do that now. What better place than there at the, at the restrooms where you can get out of your kayak, go to the rep, public restrooms and go, go over to Halas and buy some baklava? You know, it seemed like a pretty reasonable thing to do. I talked with Joyce Sackleton, who was the adjoining neighbor, owned the property, she and her mother, Mrs. George U., both of which I love dearly. They were very much in favor of the project, I thought it was great. The fellow on the other side, I was Mr. LaVenta's project, property, I talked to the guy that had the, um, uh, he had the tour boat, uh, that's right adjacent to that. I told him about what we were doing at the early stage, he said it sounded great to him. That dock is also was, when we were, uh, was at, an alternate, just trying to get prices as we get into the construction drawings. We were not trying to have that permitted as it was. That was, part of the process was, is to talk to the guys, we, I think, uh, Mr. Chapman met, we met with the two Georges, talked about their, their concerns about how, well, we pulled it back. It's not nearly what everybody's screaming about, but, you know, we're, that's just totally off-base. And it's, um, and that's, that's really, really frustrating. And I think there, there's so much misinformation and the anger, you know, Mrs. Coburn's, Miss Cob, it's, her office is less than, I don't know, a hundred and fifty yards, it's less than a block, it's across the street in Catticore, and has never come in to say, you know, listen, I'm, like a reporter, I'm trying to get my facts correct. Can you help me or walk me through this, or why are you doing this and why are you doing that? But that's no fun, it's not fun.
And I, I know what I'm talking, but if we could kinda wrap up, and I know that this, this whole thing gets to be very, very, very emotional, and what I'd like to do is, if you could kinda wrap it up, I, I understand where you're at, I tried to give you a few more minutes.
Well, there's some pretty strong attacks here.
Eddie, I, I got a few things to say before we get to it, so...
Okay.
Let me take, let me take the role.
Well, I'll, I'll say what I'll, I'll close then and that, and at some point I would like rebuttal from maybe with URS talking about that, not that we should even have to do that, but I think I would, I would like to do that because we're, we were really on target with our process and, um, but I think the thing that really saddens me the most, um, as we're into the Easter week, the anger and the hostility and the joy of in, of playing with misinformation. The dock is not eight feet out, it's six feet, four inches from where it is now is being pushed out. I was out there today, it's not a navigational issue. So, anyway, if, you know, it's just sad that people wanna be so angry and, especially at Easter, I kind of now understand it, it's biblical, isn't it? But anyway, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
My name is Annie Samarcos, my address is thirty-two West Harpen Avenue. The gentleman who just spoke did not identify himself, so maybe you would like him to do that for our citizens. Thank you.
If you would, yeah, yes, if you would do that, we'd appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I apologize. My name's Ed Hoffman of Hoffman Architects, twenty-nine West Orange Street. We were the consultants, um, along with URS, um, to do, to do this project. We're the one that they're asking about, did we do our job? Did we hold information? Did we sides, you know, swipe somebody? So, anyway, I would like a, a chance at some point to, at a next meeting, at a workshop or whatever, to let the commissioners know, as well as the public, how far off-base the information you've been playing with and how harmful it is.
Jim Colianna, Circle Drive, Tarpin Springs. A few weeks ago, I was up there and I talked about if we didn't do something with this, we were splitting the community, and I think that's why the city manager and the board came forward and stopped it. Confusion comes from lack of communication. Bad facts come from lack of communication. When you start a project three and a half, four years ago, the average person doesn't keep up with it for three and a half or four years. They don't know every intricate thing that's being done or what's being changed. Casual conversations about a project this great mean nothing in to the end results. Sixty-four inches or fifty-four inches or whatever it was is five feet. Okay? I appreciate what you've done, I would appreciate it if you would go one more step, and I'm not trying to step on the city manager's toes because he's a personal friend of mine. I would like you to pose your motion saying that this is over and give him the permission to negotiate for the remaining things, the landscape, the lighting, excuse me, and the benches. Not ninety percent, not, maybe we'll come back. Do you really wanna go through this again? These are your people out here, we're here for one reason. This whole thing was miscommunicated. Get it straight tonight, please. Stop it all for... Stop it all forever. Let's go forward with what's left. Thank you.
Deb Connolly, 1114 Flying Fish Lane in Tarpon Springs. Mark Lacouris came to our Merchants Association meeting on the 2nd of April and provided us all of the information we needed in order to make it very clear exactly what he was wanting to do. And it would really be a shame if we hold this gentleman up and not give him the opportunity to go ahead and execute this project. Now, you can go ahead and put one to the side, but the one that you talked to the merchants today, or on the 2nd of April, I think Mr. Lacouris knows exactly what we need to have done. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll look at closing, public comments. And I say something. I, I know the city manager.
Don't worry, I'll be reserved.
I, I would hope that, and I tell you this, is that, you know, I, I've had a meeting. I talked about, let's put this behind us. I know it was talked about 90%. We're talking about everything that was on the board is off the board. I mean, that's what the motion is for. And let's try to move ahead. I'm not going to get into it. I'm going to ask the city manager if he could be somewhat reserved. Yes, there have been some comments that are not true, not accurate. Doesn't bother me that, you know, it's three wars. No commissioner can stop any item by an email. You have to come here and make a decision about stopping any project right here. So that it's in front of everybody and not anywhere else. I apologize to Mr. Hoffman. I know there's some inaccuracies and you'd like to straighten some things out. For me, I'd just like to move ahead from the start. I've said to the individuals that came and spoke with me that it was just like this when we started. There was no item on that paper. It was one of what everybody wanted. I'm hopeful that we can put this behind us, get to the next item, and hopefully everybody wants that item. And then we can move ahead and make some improvements down at the docks that we all feel like is valuable. This city is the only entity that promotes the docks. It doesn't make a little bit of sense that this city would promote the docks and then try to kill the docks too. That, that doesn't really, nobody can believe that. And if I share with people, it's the same thing. I look at, if I bought my wife something very expensive, she doesn't like it, then hey, I'd rather have it back and the money in my pocket than have people angry. And that's why the project started, stopped. Not because of this was right, that was wrong, and what? As Mr. Hoffman talked about, there's a process for permitting. A process, not one that anybody had the right answer or the wrong answer. So, Mr. Lacouris, hopefully we can.
I just, I just want to let some people know that I'm extremely disappointed with the actions of some people tonight. The whole purpose of these two items that we talked about and met with was, and I made it clear, that there's no need at this time to go into the past, that we need to deal with the president and what we're going to do in the future. There is no reason to come up with the negativity that came up with tonight. There's no need to bring forward letters after people saw the agenda, were at the meetings with me and know what I wanted to present. Because what was important tonight was to show not only this community, but all the other communities that look at that, that what went on went on, but we were coming together and we came together. And we've got a common purpose. We've, our next item is a common, common goal, to take the positive nature of this and come up with this nonsense. One document from one person, and that's the authority of everything. One person says this, I can tell you, you can bring license, and I emphasize the words licensed, I won't go into it anymore, but licensed people who'll come dispute that. But the purpose was not to dispute it. I told you early on that I could probably bring facts forward that would dispute everything that was said or a large portion that was said about the river. But there was no reason to do that. There's no reason to debate it because it's a divisive process. The docks needs to come out. And whether we can permit it or not permit it, we thought the feeling of the commission would be, because even if we could permit it, even if all the facts were not true, we could get a permit for it, why putting something out there with this contention? So the whole effort of these last three weeks was to come this meeting together and be positive, move forward. And it's a shame, and I will not tell you at this meeting, because I still want to stay positive in the meeting, but some of you all, if I see you individually, I'll tell you how ashamed and disappointed I am with how you act and bringing accusations, forcing somebody to get up and try to defend themselves. That was unnecessary. And hopefully, we're going to move, move on and keep away from the negative. This project wasn't stopped because of so-called facts that came out. I really haven't seen any to do with. It's not three commissioners that I communicate with. I communicate with all five. In this case, six, because we have one that was on the board. All of them communicated with me and brought me to the, the meetings, the talks and to come up with this thing. There's not just three commissioners that caused me to write this. It was the entire board that was involved in this. This was all a total process. So I don't appreciate the separating out of some commissioners that they were more involved than others, because everybody was involved in this. And I don't appreciate the negativity that you brought to a meeting that was supposed to be positive. So hopefully, we can end this and vote on this and try to stay positive with a plan that I think everybody would happy with. And I'll be glad to tackle the negatives, the misinformation. We can do that another time, but we don't have a lot of time to do it now because we need to get on this next item and this next project, get these things going so we can beautify the docks during the off season. And we can engage in, in, in the other information later. But hopefully, we need to move on and hopefully, there'll be no more negative comments coming tonight so we can move forward and get this done.
Yes, sir.
Yes, though, first off, my comments are in two parts. First, I do want to thank Eddie Hoffman for coming tonight. He is a good man. I know him personally through Rotary. He has the best intentions. He was paid to do a job and it is his designs that I disagree with in the end, but no one should vilify him. His family's done a lot for this town. And, and if you're angry, the anger should come to us and not him, because we hired him to do that job and the buck stops with us. I want to truly thank everybody in the Save the Docks group for, for, for what you did tonight. In, in the sense that you helped save the waterway. Leading up to this, I was very ignorant about the issues of the waterway and navigation, the possibility of some of the aspects of the design that could harm our dredging appropriations in the future or harm the, the waterway. That is the last thing that, that I would ever want to do. And I thank each of you for, 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 for speaking up about that and taking the time to write me, call me and meet with me. I truly appreciate that. And any project we do in the future, that should be our goal. Because I've said before, if we design something like we're going to hopefully do in a positive manner in the next item, if we put on the wrong kind of bench or the wrong kind of sign, we can always replace that. But I truly believe if we do something to harm the waterway, whether intentionally or not, I don't believe anybody would ever intentionally do that, that could be our, our, our last shot. So that should be a litmus test going, going forward, anything with the docks or the waterway to make sure we are doing all of our due diligence to making sure we are, we are, we are, you know, protecting this, this working port. Because it's not just a tourist attraction, it is a working port first. And I do plan to place an item on, on the very near future agenda to see what went wrong in the sense of not finger pointing or, or, or not a, not a, not a, not a, not a, like a, like a, like a witch hunt, but see what we can do moving forward to make sure that we have all the, the, the information we need for projects that are this crucial. And also looking into exploring our next dredging options. I believe it takes some years to do that. And I'm glad that we can all agree on, on, on this, this new project that's going to be coming up in the next agenda item. I truly believe it'll help beautify the, the docks in a way where we can all agree on it. Thank you.
Would that, was, was.
I, I just want to make one additional comment. Commissioner Banther's asked for an agenda item to kind of follow up on this. And I, I would like to ask that as a part of that agenda item, Mr. Hoffman be given the opportunity to speak further. I think he had more that he wanted to say in regards to the project. And he had his four minutes and spoke a little bit beyond that. But I think he had some additional comments that he'd like to make. And so at that future agenda item that Commissioner Banther mentioned, I, I think Mr. Hoffman should have that opportunity as well.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I also would like to thank the group of citizens for their passion and persistence moving forward with this project. As you all know, it was in its 90% plan. And the commission at, at this meeting, or I guess in the, in the May 15th meeting, would have been voting on moving forward with, with the plans in the 90% form and going out to bid. I think we can all agree that we were on board unanimously. And without your persistence and without your passion for the town and for the overall outcome of, of the docks project, that would have happened. And I think it's proven that that would have not been in the best interests of the town within the sponge docks and also the viability of the working port. So I'm very much thankful for that. I, I appreciate as well the phone calls, emails, et cetera. Your voice was heard. I'm, I'm proud to be a part of, of revisiting this, this topic and trying to find a plan that's more quote unquote, common sense. I think, as I mentioned in an email to Mr. Lacouris a number of weeks ago, the best way to go about this was, one, to stop the project, two, find a viable project, because I think we all agree that we want to do something positive for the docks and ultimately for the town. And three, I, I 100% agree with Mr. Banther in terms of putting an item on the upcoming agenda to determine where we went wrong. And I think it's important when you spend $350,000 and a lot of citizens' time and taxpayers' time, or, uh, uh, excuse me, taxpayers' money, that we find out where we went wrong and, and essentially, you know, have an explanation of, of why we spent the money and if it was even permissible and, and find the accountability within. So I appreciate you all being here tonight. I appreciate your passion and your persistence. Thank you.
I do want to recognize Mr. Hoffman and the city for their over three years of hard work in this project. And I know that they were trying to do the right thing. I was not commissioner at the time when this plan was approved. But as commissioner-elect, I did meet with Mary Coburn and some of the business owners. And Sponge Diver also went to the Merchants Association meeting and, and sat in and listened to the new plan. I believe that, you know, we need to move forward at this point and I'm looking forward to that.
Would that roll call?
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item number 19B is authorize city manager to initiate alternative streetscape plan.
First of all, this streetscape plan is not only results of listening to a lot of people for the last three weeks, but really through the whole course of, of this project. There's some elements of this plan coming up that's been spoke about all during the three years. So this is really, I know some of it, some people refer to it as the city manager's plan, but really, it's, it's all of your plans. It's input I've got from the commissioners. It's input I've got from the citizens. And especially trying to reaffirm that in the last three weeks, trying to talk to everybody who can talk to me to get their opinions and ideas. It's almost going back to the basics. I guess I started all this in 2008 when I first became city manager, because the first meeting of the Sponge Docks Merchant Association that I went to, those of you who may be few who were at that meeting back in 2008, I committed you to try to find a million dollars to do an upgrade and, and do some improvements on the docks. That's where the first promise made to come to all this. And really, of course, being new as city manager and just getting into this is pretty simple plan of what we could do to beautify the docks. It went along the course. It did citizen engagement, a lot of ideas. And basically, what ended up from all this with us is maybe with all the controversy, let's just go back to that basic plan and that basic idea. And what are all the elements that we've talked about over the last three, four years? What are some of the common elements that will not be controversial, will enhance beautification of the docks? Importantly, things we can do this off season so we're not wasting another year. We understand when we do this project, we always go a year away because we don't want to do as much as possible during the season. So if we decide something too late, then we have to wait through the whole season and we lose another year. And we've lost them years on this. So basically, it comes down to, to, to four basic elements of, of the project to bring back forward to, to the commission and to the people. The four items are comprehensive lighting project, replacement of amenities, and that are things like benches, trash receptacles, maybe the potted plants, that sort of things. Complete sidewalk and curb replacement enhancements and repairs from one side of the dock to the other, and landscape improvements. I think those are fair elements where, for instance, you might disagree if you want this type of tree or that type of tree or this type of bench or that. Those are some simple disagreements that can be worked out. And, you know, we can always come with a few choices and this by body picking. But those will be elements that we can do non-controversial. The lighting project, interestingly enough, was one of the projects talked about at the beginning of the processes and was eliminated because it is going to be a costly project. And at that time, it was kind of eliminated, but one I thought was important. First of all, you've seen what we've done with Tarpen Avenue when we've got control of the street, the tremendous changes we make, we had control. The lights of the docks belong to Duke Energy. So when you lease them and they're somebody else's property, there's some limits on what you can do with it. So one of the important things of lights, I had people say to me, well, what's the difference the lights can make? It's not just the lights. First of all, replacing the lights and, you know, we've been able to find some old pictures of sponge docks and a type of light that was there. So really, one of the choices that we're going to bring back is try to come as close to that original light that was there, if that's the wishes of the people. But the importance is not just having nice new streets light there. What you need to imagine is new lights that have receptacles at the top. So the docks can have Christmas decorations that light up during the holiday season. We don't have that now. We can't do that now and stuff. Greek Independence Day, walk in that corridor and having nice, large Greek Independence Day banners, or having Epiphany banners during Epiphany, or whatever occasion it'll come up to have historic and cultural banners. So we're not just talking about lights. We're talking about lights that could be decorated, that could have banners on them. And when you talk about that on a streetscape, just picture in your mind the enhancement of that look if those things are on those. So yes, it's one of the more expensive propositions, but it's not just lights. It's not just new LED lights that's going to save the taxpayers' money, because they're not the energy, not efficient lights that are there now. Plus the fact that we will be leasing and paying them. So the lighting's an important aspect. Obviously, benches, receptacles, they're old, a lot of them need replacements. We can talk about that. Many of you walking up and down the docks when we're dealing with other issues, different places on the sidewalks and curb, comprehensive, one side of the docks to the other. Let's fix those areas that we've been talking about for a long time. And again, try to come to some consensus on some nice landscaping, landscaping that's not going to affect the driveways for the sponge boats, not going to affect anything that we can do. And I can tell you, we can, we can spend the money left. And if you picture all those things being done as close to the beginning of season as we can get them to, I think it'll be a great and beautiful project up and down the docks. The way I envision this for the commission and for the citizens is each of these elements are going to be brought back in separate pieces. For one thing, the other plan was always something big expansive coming back. But in this case, it's very easy on all these to go to the main groups, Sponge Docks Merchant Association, Ms. Coburn and her group. And then, of course, we don't want to ignore anybody else who wasn't in those two groups. Go with what's available and, and get citizen input before it comes back to you. The first thing we have to do is the lights. That's the thing that's going to take the longest. We got to negotiate with Duke Energy how fast they're going to take theirs out. There's some question if they'll even let us through our conduit. We got to put some new conduit. We're working with them. They're being cooperative so far, but we've got a lot of issues to handle. So the first thing, I'm probably going to ask those two groups within, starting tomorrow through next Wednesday, to be available to meet with my people. All these things, by the way, will be done in-house with us, to meet with my people and look at the lights that are available. There's not a lot that's available. So we don't have 30 choices. There's not a lot that's available to do. There's not a lot that's available to do. And the first element I'd bring back to the commission is that plan, because that's the one that's most time-consuming. Landscaping, sidewalk repair, the other amenities are fast. Look at what type, order them and go into. But if we're going to do this lighting portion, we'd bring that back to you. We'd bring it to the citizens first for a consensus. Same with the curbs. We walk up and down the streets, get all the curbs we think we need fixed, go to those groups and see, and then, of course, we'd bring that as a piece back to the commission. Anybody who didn't get a chance to speak, I've got this place on the sidewalk or this needs to be added. We can do it that way. Same thing with all different parts. Start, go to the citizens, get input, bring it to this board so this board can decide and hear any other input there, and then try to move fast and do that. And that's pretty much my alternative plan. Real basic, simple, but something that when it's done, if you can envision all those four things done on the docks in season, I think by the opening of next season, we can have a beautiful dock that we've made great improvements on and have a great look to. So far, I've met with pretty much unanimous support from every group I've been to. So I would like the commission to authorize me moving forward with going to this plan and coming back to you with these pieces as fast as I can so we can get moving and try to get them in this off-season so we can be prepared to have a season where we've got tremendous improvements, got Christmas lights up for the holidays, and move along and, you know, spend this money wisely and something that's really going to have an effect on the docks that is not controversial.
Any questions for the city manager for this plan?
Thank you. Mr. La Couris, I don't necessarily have any questions. I fully support your plan. I think it's something that we can all look forward to. I do ask, though, as you're walking the street and trying to define areas for planters or curbs or sidewalks or however you see moving forward with the plan, I would ask that you make sure that property owners are identified. I know there's a lot of property owners that aren't in the audience tonight that don't necessarily, that aren't necessarily in Ms. Coburn's group or the Merchants Association group. So I would ask that you touch base with them and make them aware of what's going on and what you foresee or how you foresee the project moving forward. And once you do have your plan pretty much laid out, I think at that time, if it's the will of the commission, if we could have a special work session to go over that prior to moving forward with an approval. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Banther? I as well, I as well fully, fully support this plan. And I want to thank the city manager for quickly putting this together so we can still do this in the off-season and that we were all able to come to an improvement project that we can all agree on for the docks, wouldn't just stop it and do nothing, which I think would not have been good at all. So I thank you for that.
A trivial entertaining motion. I move for approval.
Second?
The only thing that I would add as we go to a public comment is that whatever group is meeting, that's publicized so that anybody that would like to attend it can, so that they have plenty of opportunities to be involved. With that, any public comments on this side?
Beverly Belair is 1028 Peninsula Avenue. I just want to ask one question. Mark, I'm glad we're going forward on this, but as the discussion's been, I've heard so far, you keep talking about Dotacanese. With these improvements that you're proposing now, are you looking at Athens Street as well and make sure that's included?
Possibly, but we've also got an upcoming CIP project for Athens and Hope Street coming up. So if it goes through and we can start up Athens like the other projects started in that first block, but we've also got a set of money coming up, I think in next year's CIP, for looking at Athens and Hope also, so...
Well, that's good. I just would like to see the continuity so that Athens Street is considered part of the sponge docks and not separated.
Yeah, that's one of the things from plan. There is a landscaping plan on Athens that would be possible to bring back for that first part of Athens and stuff that I don't believe there's controversial elements, but we'll bring it back and make sure there's not... But as I said, that's why I said there are elements of the plan that we did that can be revisited as we're going. The plan that we added in the 100 block of Athens, the first block of Athens, that could be very viable within this project.
Thank you. Sol Hannah, thank you very much.
There are no other public comments? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Next we go to ordinances and resolutions. Item 28, application 19-98, Marabella Associates LLC, annexation of 3.1 acres located at the southeast corner of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road East, providing for commercial, general, and preservation on the future land use map and providing for general business and land conservation zoning districts. We have three items that's associated with this. Two of them are legislative and one of them are quasi-judicial. Is Ms. Vincent around?
Maybe she thought I was going to talk longer.
I'm hoping she's going to talk. She's probably caught in a crush of people.
We can do without her. It's a no-brainer. We can figure recess while they're all there.
Yeah, we want to take a two-minute to let everybody clear out.
Yeah, we can do that. We'll recess as it's five, Ms. Vincent.
No, I just would like to do more research.
Oh, yeah, me too. Yeah, we'll figure that out. I mean, you've got to bring it forward. But I mean, I will tell you this, this guy did a huge dock project for me personally. And I know, I mean, I can list others. I mean, he doesn't cite his certifications and his resume, but he's also the city manager of the park. It's pretty credible.
Well, yeah. Yeah, just sometimes things get out of hand before we know all the facts.
Well, they wanted to do the next item and they couldn't find Renee. So we took a recess while they found her.
She was in the hallway. I had to blow my nose. I don't want to blow it in here, so...
They took a recess to try to find her.
She's right.
Yeah, she came in with me.
I actually thought there'd be more people here still.
You'll see a lot of quasi-judicial stuff, especially in a sale.
I would, I wouldn't break your act.
When you start doing quasi, I can send you a little catch like that if you're talking about. You don't see a lot of it in the smaller...
I munch down on this. I get a box each month. I'm looking for free food that's tested to be good.
It's almost, like, for example, a variance is a quasi-judicial proceeding.
You need to scan it. I should do that.
Yeah, yeah. I know, right? Commissioner Terpenny, is my associate ready more? Can I answer to that?
Yeah. Oh, yeah? Yeah, you definitely learn a lot more here than you do going to some of the beach communities that we represent. Me for seven minutes and go. Really? It's fun.
Bring me anything road-rey. I'll scan it for you and give it to the city clerk.
They're all, they're all a little bit different. You can glean different things.
You know, I've read right. She goes off a hibiscus. We hire her off. All she does is scanning for us.
Yeah, this gun range should be fun.
Anita's always a tough one. It's good, though. I get this box once a month, a gluten-free food that supposedly tastes perfect.
Yep.
Oh, you're, this is your sample? This is your try? Good?
Not bad.
Of course. I haven't had dinner since nine or eight, whatever. I like them too, but I can't eat them. That's not real fish. Need to go flush that out in here. That ain't, that ain't real fish.
It's not organic.
No, I don't eat cod, but yeah.
Wild cod?
I got, I think I'll see food once. I tell myself never again.
I don't eat cod.
That's just called Rusty Bellies, first restaurant I know, or the fish of mine, and my neighbor, her husband is a stripper. From his belt, besides that, no. You go to parties at Christmas, they got a little shrimp in there. That was, that was the last time I'm going to have that happen to me. It's like over in a bar without, like, the glue taste, sort of.
You should pick yourself something.
Yeah.
See, I was good.
The what?
I was good.
Yeah, well done. These are good. I've munched on these before in an emergency.
I was good.
They were good. You were city manager, La Couris.
Well, because I expected...
Just don't be going after folks in private. I don't want to get a call that you flipped somebody.
I saw all that stuff, but I knew something.
Yeah, that was my main concern was that he was not, I don't like that.
I wouldn't have said if it was directed at that, I wouldn't have said that.
That's why I said what I said. That's why I said what I said.
Because, I mean, you can't, there's someone at their heart and talk.
Yeah, they ain't, they ain't trying to do nothing bad.
Innocent.
Yeah. That's why I said what I said.
I just wish they'd directed. I wouldn't even mind it. I would have said a word, they directed it. I just...
That's why I told him. I said, luck stops with us.
No, I hope it doesn't come to us. I said, we've got to, I hope you don't have, well, I got to come anyway because I got a feeling. I said, I don't think you have to defend yourself. If you came from here about 10:30, they were worried, they were...
I'm sure. I'd say we are city members. I'm sure.
And we can go ahead and re-adjourn this meeting?
No.
Hello?
What's that? She's on a ear, I said. That sounds good.
As I stated, we are going, ordinance is resolution, item 28, application 13-98, Marabella Associates LLC, annexation of 3.1 acres located at the southeast corner of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road East, providing for commercial, general, and preservation on the future land use map and providing for general business and land conservation zoning districts. And the three items, two of them are legislative, the annexation and the ordinance 2014-05, future land use designation, and one part of it is quasi-judicial and that's the zoning classifications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the one portion of this item is quasi-judicial, as are the next two, item 21 and 22, I am going to ask that those members in the audience here for items 20, 21, and 22, please listen to the quasi-judicial announcement as it will be applicable to those proceedings as well. I'll first read the resolute, or the ordinances on the, on item 20. We have ordinance 2014-04, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing approximately 3.1 acres, more or less, of real property lying in the north one-half of Section 12. Township 27 South, range 15 East, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance 2014-04 by title only. The second reading will be held on May 6, 2014. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 1, 2014, and will be published again on April 26, 2014. Ordinance 2014-05, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for annexed property lying in the north one-half of Section 12, Township 27 South, range 15 East, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road, Pinellas County Future Land Use Designations of CG Commercial General and P Preservation, to City of Tarpon Springs' Future Land Use Designations of CG Commercial General and P Preservation, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's the first reading of ordinance 2014-05 by title only. Second reading will be held on May 6, 2014. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 1 and will be published again on April 26, 2014. Ordinance 2014-03, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for annexed property lying in the north one-half of Section 12, Township 27 South, range 15 East, located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road, from Pinellas County zoning designations of C1 Neighborhood Commercial District and AE Agricultural Estate, to City of Tarpon Springs zoning designations of GB General Business District and LC Land Conservation, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's ordinance 2014-03 by title only, first reading. Second reading will be held on May 6, 2014. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 1, 2014, and will be published again on April 26, 2014. These proceedings are quasi-judicial. Where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity at such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law but rather to apply law that has already been established. Any quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence at the hearing demonstrates that their applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this quasi-judicial hearing. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning of this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine city staff. The applicant will then present its testimony and witnesses. City staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition to the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make its closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses at this point in the proceedings. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this juncture, relative to item number 20, these particular ordinances regarding this annexation and changing the zoning classifications, I'm going to ask anyone who intends to testify to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? At this time, I ask the commission to disclose any exportate communications on agenda item 20. Seeing none?
Before I begin, I do not see the applicant in the audience, so I'm going to ask the board if you want to go ahead and go forward with this, or do you want to defer action on it?
It's a pleasure.
I see no reason to defer it. I mean, unless, unless the applicant doesn't want to move forward.
No, they, I'm not sure why they're not here. They get notice that they need to be at the meetings, but it's at the board's discretion. I don't, there hasn't been any controversy over this, so...
It is board's discretion as long as there are no notification problems. We're okay there?
No.
I see anybody saying no, so...
Thank you. This is application 13-98 for Marabella Associates. This is an annexation ordinance for approximately 3.1 acres located at the southeast corner of North Pinellas Avenue and Anclot Road East. This property is currently land use commercial, general, and preservation in Pinellas County. The applicant is requesting to annex the property to the City of Tarpon Springs. They have some additional property adjoining this that's already in the city, and bringing everything under one jurisdiction will be advantageous and just easier for them for the future. There are no development plans at this point in time. This is simply an annexation application. When we do the annexation, you also have a corresponding land use ordinance as well as zoning ordinance to apply the appropriate city land use and city zoning codes to the property. Under the standards for review, this property annexation will not create an enclave, and it is contiguous to existing city boundaries, and is reasonably compact, so it is eligible for, for annexation. There are no issues with the ability of the city to be able to provide services to this property. Water and sewer is already in the area, solid waste at such time that they would need... Water and sewer is already in the area, uh, solid waste. It's such time that they would need it, would be provided by waste management. Law enforcement, uh, will shift from Pinellas County to the city of Tarpon Springs, and the fire service is already provided by the city of Tarpon Springs. Uh, under the land use, uh, considerations, uh, as I said, this property will be annexed in. It will come in under the exact same, uh, land use category of commercial general and preservation under the county, under countywide plan rules. Pinellas County has the same land use that we do, so they'll just basically be transferred with the same, uh, land use classifications to the city of Tarpon Springs. And then the last piece of this is a zoning ordinance amendment, uh, which will, uh, switch the zoning from the Pinellas County designations of, excuse me, while I find those again, of, it's commercial, commercial one, and, um, they have, uh, on the preservation portion, they have actually agricultural state on the zoning. So, the city of Tarpon Springs will be applying the annex, uh, general business, as well as on the preservation piece, which is the south piece, will be providing the land conservation, uh, zoning district applica, uh, zoning district. Planning and zoning board reviewed this at their March, regular March meeting and recommended approval by a vote of seven oh. Uh, as a result of notification, we did receive three inquiries just asking what this was about. At the planning and zoning board, uh, one question was asked if there was anything related to transfer of density rights associated with this, and there are none. And the planning and zoning board did recommend approval of the vote at their meeting, and the staff recommendation is to approve all three of the ordinances as presented. Thank you.
Since there's no applicant, I ask the commission if there are any questions for staff at this point.
I don't have any.
I just have a question.
Have a chance to look at.
Uh, Ms. Vincent, just to reiterate, um, essentially, there's no change in land use or zoning of the property other than just some language changes and verbiage?
Essentially, yes. And we're required when we annex property in that we bring it in under the, an equal or lesser intensity when we annex property in.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application? Any members wish to speak in support of the application? Does staff wish to make a closing argument, summary? Mr. Mayor.
Um, I don't have any more questions. Uh, I had a chance to look at the planning and zoning, so it seemed like a great opportunity for not only, uh, the individual that's applying, but for us as a city, so. If anybody has no questions, then we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Um, actually, we, I think we needed to do all three motions separately.
Yeah, you need to do three.
Why don't we, so, that would have been, uh, the one for the legislative, uh, annexation. We can let the record, uh, reflect that, that was the first one. Then we need to do one, by the twenty B ordinance, uh, twenty-fourteen dash zero five, future land use designation, that's legislative, Joe. We get a motion for approval.
Move approval, please, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes, uh, and the last one is ordinance twenty-fourteen dash zero three, uh, zoning classification.
Move approval, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, the next item we have is item twenty-one, resolution twenty-fourteen dash eleven, application fourteen dash zero six, conditional use for, um, series two COP in the, uh, T-five C zoning district for property located at four, uh, nine eight Athens.
Resolution twenty-fourteen dash eleven, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number fourteen dash zero six for the on-premise consumption of beer and wine for property located at four ninety-eight Athens Street, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. It's resolution twenty-fourteen dash eleven by title only. Again, this is quasi-adjudicial. I would ask for, um, persons wishing to testify on this item to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I'd ask for the commission to disclose any ex parte communications at this time.
None.
Seeing none. Ms. Vincent.
Thank you. This is application fourteen dash zero six for property at four ninety-eight Athens Street. This application is a conditional use for a series two COP, on-premise consumption of beer and wine. Uh, the subject property has been the location of several restaurants in the past, and in the past has also had two COP licenses at this location. Uh, however, since they have been inactive for more than one year, it does require the board to reconsider, uh, any new, uh, alcohol consumption or beer and wine on, on the premise. Under the conformance with requirements of the Land Development Code, this, uh, this particular use is not located within two hundred feet of an existing church or school of general education. Um, the additional review criteria, staff does not find any negative impacts under the review. We do not anticipate, uh, find that this, the use is compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. This area does contain, um, a series of restaurants, um, and, and retail uses. Find it's consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of comprehensive plan, and no environmental or historical resources will be adversely impacted, and the use is consistent with commercial development patterns in the area, and shall provide for efficient and orderly development considering the impact upon growth patterns, for the city of Tarpon Springs. The planning and zoning board did review this application at their regular March meeting and recommended approval. One person did speak, uh, at that, at the hearing. Um, he spoke against liquor at the location. He was specific to liquor. I don't, uh, but was not in support of having liquor there. Uh, some of the discussions, the planning and zoning board, uh, there was some discussion about trash collection in the area. It was really more of a general discussion about that not really particularly, with this particular applicant. Uh, the applicant was questioned about outdoor music, and they indicated that they did not, or would not have outdoor entertainment at the, at this location. And the planning and zoning board did recommend approval by a vote of seven oh, and staff recommendation certainly is to, uh, is to approve the application as presented. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation? That's you? If you'd like to be heard, come on down and at the podium, please. You can just go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Zanmihalidis, and this is four nine eight Athens Street, Tarpon Springs.
And feel free to let the commission know anything about your application that you think they might want to know.
Yes, sir.
Anything at all you wish to put on the record about your application?
No.
Say you can just agree, do you agree with what the, uh, staff has said before?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Fair enough.
I agree.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public in opposition to the application? Any members of the public in support of the application? Any closing summaries from staff or the applicant? Questions from the commission?
Any questions? The chair will entertain a motion.
Move for approval, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Terpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie.
Yes. Uh, next we go to, uh, resolution twenty-fourteen dash twelve, reload site, uh, planned form of Days Inn site. This is quasi-adjudicial.
Resolution twenty-fourteen dash twelve, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number fourteen dash zero eight for site plan approval for a five thousand, fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three, more or less, square foot indoor gun range, and two fifty-five hundred square foot flex warehouse buildings located at four zero zero five nine US Highway nineteen north, providing for findings, providing for certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. Again, this is quasi-adjudicial. I would ask for anyone who wishes to testify this evening to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I'd ask for the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this application? Seeing none.
This is application fourteen dash zero eight for the reload indoor shooting range. Uh, the property location is forty, forty thousand, fifty, US Highway nineteen north. Property contains four point three nine acres. Property is zone highway business, and the, uh, future land use designation is commercial limited. The subject property is a former location of the IHOP restaurant in Days Inn, which is in a dilapidated state. Has been vacant for proper, approximately ten years, and in a deteriorating condition. Uh, the proposed use is to demolish the restaurant and the motel, and to construct a fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three square feet indoor shooting range and two fifty-five hundred square foot flex buildings. Um, as I stated, the zoning regulations, uh, under the zoning regulations of highway business, the uses that this particular use, uh, would fall under are really three. Commercial recreation would be the primary, uh, the range itself, the retail sales use, as well as retail food, all of which are permitted uses in the highway business zoning district. Under the site plan review criteria, I've already stated what the project, proposed project is. Under the construction schedule, demolition and construction would, would be proposed to commence after site plan approval. Construction, uh, would, uh, the site plan, uh, the primary use of the gun range would be constructed within the next one to two years, and then the flex buildings would occur later on, within the next three to five years. Uh, all utilities are available to the site. Uh, access will be via one access point, uh, on US nineteen. Uh, currently, there are two access points to the site. One of those will be closed off. Under the landscaping and screening, the landscaping plan does, uh, comply with the Land Development Code for sidewalks, uh, excuse me, parking lot landscaping, as well as exterior buffer screening, uh, from adjoining uses. Um, under the environmental conditions, I will just call attention to that. The applicant has submitted an acoustical analysis prepared by Fagan Acoustical Consultants, which demonstrates that, uh, no sound from the indoor shooting range will, essentially will travel beyond the property lines. There's a bit of extensive explanation of, of the acoustical analysis, but, uh, suffice it that it was prepared by professionals and does demonstrate, uh, no adverse impacts on the, on the adjoining properties. With respect to air quality and things of that nature, an EPA permit is required for this project. We don't regulate that, but they do strictly regulate air quality both within and outside, uh, anything leaving the, the, uh, this, the range, uh, as well as lead collection and things of that nature. Um, under the levels of service analysis, the only thing that I would call attention to is a transportation impact study, which was prepared by a professional engineer, which is essentially demonstrates a decrease in the, both total trips per day and PM peak hours from the existing use, obviously, when it was operating. So that, that is, uh, again, a net decrease in transportation impacts. Um, under public correspondence, I think you have all of the stack of, it's been coming in, as well as, uh, was part of the agenda backup, both, you know, supporting and in opposition, uh, to the, to the project. Um, it's planning and zoning board meeting, there were public comments, again, both supporting and opposing the project. The, uh, developer did have a, was essentially a public meeting. It was more of a private meeting with the residents of Stonehenge Mobile Home Park to discuss the, uh, the project, and my understanding that was very well attended. The staff recommendation is to approve the site plan for the fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three square foot indoor shooting range and two fifty-five hundred square foot flex building, subject to the following conditions. The developer's responsible for acquiring all their jurisdictional permits and for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code. Construction plans, signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed to practice in the state of Florida, must be submitted within one year of the date of final site plan approval. The site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for a building permit. And the architecture of the building must be substantially similar to the elevation and rendering submitted by the applicant. Um, I do want to step back for, for one second. Under the comprehensive plan review, we do find that the proposed plans are in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies of the city of Tarpon Springs comprehensive plan. Specifically, we find that it does further or has no adverse effects on the goals of the comprehensive plan by compliance with policies one point one point one through one point one point eleven, as well as policies two point four point one through two point four point nine. Uh, as I stated, this is commercial limited, um, designation under the land use. The intent statement there is to designate areas for the development of commercial uses, attractions, and accommodations for the tourist-oriented, oriented economy. I think you can make some cogent arguments, uh, that because of the regional nature of this particular use, that you will be bringing people into the city of Tarpon Springs. Planning and zoning board reviewed this at their March seventeen meeting. Uh, there was a lot of issues discussed. The lead collection system, which is a very sophisticated, state-of-the-art collection system. I'm sure the applicant will go into how that operates. Air quality, both internal and external. Again, as I stated, that is, is regulated through EPA permits. Uh, and again, I think they will address that, uh, to your satisfaction, when they give their testimony. There was one, uh, suggestion regarding the landscaping plan to, uh, replace the laurel oaks in the parking lot with something that would, over time, would cause less damage to the parking lot. The applicant has agreed to do that. Um, that condition was, or recommendation was placed on the actual resolution of approval at the recommendation of the planning and zoning board. Uh, there were discussions about the market area. How far will people travel to use the range? And, uh, extensive discussion of the soundproofing and the construction methods, as well as, uh, some, you know, assurances that the parking lot lighting would not spill over into the adjoining properties. Planning and zoning board, after hearing all evidence and testimony, recommended approval of the project by a vote of seven oh. And you have an extensive set of backup. Uh, you have the site plan, the architectural renderings, the acoustical analysis, um, a March fourteen letter regarding the acoustical analysis from the Fagan Acoustical Consultants. And then the last piece that was included in your backup was an economic analysis from the Economic Development Manager for the city of Tarpon. And with that, I'll close, and I'll answer any questions at the appropriate time of the hearing. Thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make a presentation, please?
The applicant.
Oh, the applicant.
Yes, sir.
That wouldn't be me.
No.
I'm just, I'm just eager.
Good evening, uh, mayor and, and city commission. Appreciate your time, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I know we're, uh, two hours and forty-five minutes into this, so, uh, thank you for your time. Agree with everything Ms. Vincent said. Uh, we started this process a little over a year ago. Uh, we came and met with the city of Tarpon Springs, and we've gone through, uh, your entire process. Staff report, you know, we met with staff. Uh, they wanted, they voted for approval. We addressed their comments, went to the planning and zoning meeting in March, and, uh, that was a seven oh vote to approve as well. This is, uh, it falls in the criteria of an approved land use for this site, and, uh, we're here tonight to, to hopefully get your support as well, so we can move forward on this project, uh, soon as possible. Just a little background in this. When we started this process about a year ago, before we even, uh, came to Tarpon, we went and we hired some of the, the, the best designers, engineers, and manufacturers of gun ranges, and not only the US, but in the world. Action Target, who is, uh, they're really the global leader in shooting ranges. They've been for, for twenty-eight years. They've installed thousands of ranges, uh, across the world, the United States and twenty-five other countries. They, they've done approximately ninety percent of all Florida gun ranges, uh, including twenty-two law enforcement academies, Pinellas County sheriffs, Hillsborough County sheriffs, and Orlando PD, which is the largest, uh, indoor gun range, non-federal, uh, in the country. They've also done several government ranges, FBI National Academy, FEMA, US Border Patrol, Toronto Police Services in Canada, Federal Air Marshals, University of Texas, uh, Training Facility, Virginia Military Institute, on and on and on. All the ranges they design, they've never, uh, been informed or, or any report that they've ever had a, a bullet be able to leave one of their ranges. They take great pride in that. Uh, with all these thousands of ranges, they do not know of any instances where, uh, that has happened. All their range designs are in accordance with the NRA, Navy, GSA, which is the Government Services Administration, OSHA, NASH, and EPA standards. We also, uh, are working with the range ventilation, which is a very important component with this range as well, which I'll get into in a little bit, with, uh, a company called, uh, Kerry Small, uh, Small Arms Range Ventilation, which is a partner company with Action Target as well, and they've done over five hundred, uh, small ranges in the US. They're, the air that is actually discharged from this range- Of course, their systems, like Ms. Vincent said, EPA is the monitoring governing body of that, and all their systems meet or exceed EPA, NASH, and OSHA standards. Their systems have never failed an institutional hygienist test, which is the OSHA test. This is done on government ranges, military ranges, private ranges like this, and their system moves air approximately 75 feet per minute through the range, and we'll get into that in a second. But I just wanted to give you a little background about that. We've also, our architecture team and our engineering team, who's here tonight to answer any questions as well, Arc Three Architecture has designed several ranges in this area, as well as they were the architect for the Pinellas County gun range down on 118th Avenue. What are, you know, really three things that this range is going to accomplish? It's going to get rid of an eyesore there on US-19, the old hotel that is currently falling down, as Ms. Vincent said. We want to bring a sophisticated, state-of-the-art gun range here that is going to do a magnitude of different things. It's going to offer education. We're going to have classes there from how to properly clean a firearm, to shooting classes for ladies, to youth shooting. We've been asked about Boy Scouts, if they can come shoot there and take their classes there, and absolutely, we would love that. It does have a safe environment, a controlled environment, for people to practice using their firearms. We have a sales, a retail component of this, 10,000 square foot retail area. We have a simulator system that law enforcement could use, the Tarpon Police Department, Pinellas County Sheriff, could come in and train on this system. We have a cafe, we have multiple teaching rooms. So it's really, it covers the full gamut of anyone who would want to come and be educated and practice, you know, safe gun skills. We put in a full tactical range that law enforcement could come use, that we hope to be able to partner with Tarpon Police Department and other agencies to have a training area in their backyard. And then the third major thing it does is it's going to create a new tax base, a new tax revenue for the city of Tarpon Springs, which I believe was identified in your report. We have over 148 different subcontractors and vendors who have already submitted bids or interest in taking part in this project. In the end, there'll be 40 to 45 different contractors that help construct this project, and which will employ 200 to 250 full-time construction jobs during the construction process. And then ultimately, when the range is open, there'll be somewhere between 25 and 40 employees based on demand and how busy the range would be. You know, a couple concerns that have been brought to our attention is sound. If you look in your report, there's a cut sheet. We've designed this building as safe as any gun range in the country. The exterior walls have seven and a quarter inches of solid poured reinforced concrete that extend 10 feet above the roof with a parapet wall. You then have six inches of insulation and a six-inch air gap, and then you have another five and a half inches of solid concrete, and then you have an interior acoustical treatment as well. So you would have all those layers of concrete insulation that sound and/or a bullet would have to get through. On the roof, the first line of defense you have is ballistic steel that's suspended from the ceiling. They're called safety baffles, which are also part of your diagram. You then have the structural steel joists, you have the structural steel deck, you have five inches of structural concrete, then you have four inches of foam insulation, and then you have a three-inch concrete topping on top of that. And then any access point is a bulletproof door, or an about two-and-a-half-inch-thick bullet-resistant glass. So there's no way for the bullet to ever leave the shooting range. At the end of the range, you have, kind of looks like a V, that's called the total containment trap. And what happens is when a firearm is fired, the bullet travels downrange, the ventilation system sucks any smoke down it, and the bullet enters that trap and goes into what we call a deceleration chamber. All these diagrams are in your packet, and the bullet slows down until it drops, losing all of its momentum, which then it goes onto an auger, and the auger rotates down to the end of the building and drops the bullet fragments into a 55-gallon drum for recycling. Any of the smoke or residue out of the bullets is sucked with the ventilation system downrange at 75 feet per minute and goes into that same small slit at the end of the range. It's then run through a series of HEPA filters and is recycled back into the building. 25% of it is exhausted, 75% of it comes right back into the building. That's the air that, when tested, is cleaner than going outside and breathing air today. I don't think with all those ranges, thousands of ranges, if there was a problem with lead leaving the building, that we wouldn't be hearing about it, EPA wouldn't be stopping it, these guys, you know, wouldn't be the leaders in design if there was an issue. All the lead or dust fragments or bullet fragments are augered and put into 55-gallon drums, where once a month, a certified lead recycling company comes, come in with their dolly, remove the 55-gallon drum, and bring a new one back in. The employees in the range never have to touch the lead. That's why they call it a total containment system. So in the initial design, we took into account the sound with the neighboring residents. We took into account how to handle any dust, any lead. That's all been taken into account, designed for in this system. There was a question about fail safes. This building has a state-of-the-art computer system that if a filter isn't changed that needs to be changed, it's shut off. If it loses negative pressure, all the ranges have negative pressure in them, so that when you open a door, first of all, there's two doors to each range, both of them can't be open at the same time. They have magnetic locks, the access is controlled into the range. So if the system senses that there's, it loses the negative pressure where it's recycling all the air downrange, it shuts the range down. So all these, you know, practices, procedures that have been put in place, all employees, before they start, are giving a baseline blood test to show their levels, to make sure they have no elevated levels of lead, and then those are tested. OSHA, EPA can demand them at any time, but we also, the range would test them quarterly as well, because there's a huge liability if you let your employees be exposed to this. So that's why we've taken all these precautions to alleviate any of those issues. But it's a great education experience. We've contacted other law enforcement to the best of our ability up in Port Ritchie, Tarpon Police Department, Pinellas County Sheriff, just asking if they have any feedback about do ranges bring violence to the area or bring extra crime? And all the feedback that we've got has been very positive, as in they don't. Pinellas County Sheriff said that one of the ranges here on US-19, actually, someone came in to try to sell a weapon, and when they ran the serial number, it came back as a hot weapon. They notified the sheriff, sheriff came in, arrested it as a stolen weapon. So in this range, you're not going to attract criminals, because when you come in, the first thing you're doing is sliding their driver's license into the computer system. If you purchase a firearm, you have to go through the state-mandated background check. So you don't have, you're not bringing or drawing criminals to this facility, because that's the last place they want to be, because the facility, if they run across someone who's got a bad background, or doesn't come back, or they bring a stolen weapon, we're immediately calling Tarpon PD to come up and pick them up. We want to be good neighbors, and I think we've done everything we can to do that. I think we've gone above and beyond. You won't find another range. In the southeast, we traveled all around the country, looking at over 20 ranges, making sure that we do all the right things and give the best product for not only our customers, but for the community as well. And I think with what you have before you today and what we have put together, that's exactly what we've done. So we just look for your support tonight, so we can get this project going. We'd like to start it this summer and have it open the end of the first quarter of 2015. So be more than happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to ask you to put your name and address on the record. I don't think you introduced yourself with the story.
Apologize. Justin Floyd with Whole Development, 630 Chestnut Street, Clearwater, Florida 33756.
All right, this time I ask for any members of the public in opposition to the application to please come down and be heard if you desire.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Commissioners, Chief, my name is Peter Gamble. My address is 425 South Camelia Avenue in Tarpon Springs. Florida Statute Title X, Chapter 112.311, Concerning Legislative Intent and Declaration of Policy, states, quote, "It's essential to the proper conduct and operation of government that public officials be independent and impartial," quote. The purpose of my testimony is to put into the record evidence that Commission Member David Banther took a position in support of the Reload Gun Range prior to this hearing in violation of the requirement that public officials be independent and impartial. The evidence of the lack of impartial behavior was made public by Councilmember Banther on the Facebook page of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, which declares itself to be, quote, "government organization," quote, and, quote, "the official Facebook page of the city of Tarpon Springs," quote. Attached with my statement are five copies of an image of the Facebook page in which Commissioner Banther indicated his support for the Reload Gun Range and the Tarpon Springs Facebook page by joining the list of those who chose to like the item, describing the proposal that was posted on March 17, 2014. Next, I cite the Government in the Sunshine Manual, Section C, which states the following, quote, "The sunshine law requires boards to meet in public. Boards may not take action on or engage in private discussions of board business via written correspondence, emails, text messages, other electronic communications." See AGO 09-19. Members of a city board or commission may not engage on the city's Facebook page in an exchange or discussion of matters that foreseeably will come before the board or commission for official action," quote. The previously mentioned AGO 09-19 is what is called an advisory legal opinion, and AGO 2009-19 was published by Florida Attorney General Pam Bondi on April 23, 2009, and it says in Point 4, quote, "Communications on the city's Facebook page regarding city business by city commissioners may be subject to Florida's Government in the Sunshine Law, Section 286.011 Florida statutes. Thus, members of a city board or commission must not engage on the city's Facebook page in an exchange or discussion of matters that foreseeably will come before the board or commission for official action," quote. Florida's Government in the Sunshine Law, Section 286.011, which Attorney General Bondi says may apply in the case of a Facebook page exchange, states in paragraph 3A, quote, "Any public officer who violates any provision of this section is guilty of a non-criminal infraction punishable by fine not exceeding $500," quote. I hereby request, respectively, that Commissioner Banther remove himself from this meeting because he has demonstrated he is neither independent nor impartial with regard to the Reload Gun Range proposal, and is in violation of the Florida Sunshine Law. Additionally, I learned that the Florida law Statute 112.311 does not allow a public official to abstain from voting at an open hearing unless they have a financial conflict of interest. The law, however, does not require an elected official to show up to vote. Therefore, I request Commissioner Banther, please leave this proceeding immediately. Thank you. I have copies of my statement on the Facebook page image, so if it were changed later...
Anything that you want to put in the ruckus if you give it to the clerk?
Pardon me?
Anything that you'd like to have placed in the ruckus if you would give it to the clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, will the city manager, I mean, the city attorney address, if I need to leave the room, or recuse myself of any nature, for liking, I want to make it clear, it's for liking the status of this Facebook update?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see the exhibit before I make an opinion.
If you could give a copy of that to our attorney and a copy to the clerk, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Archie, Commissioners, Mr. La Chorus, and members of the panel. My name is Suzanne Murphy. I reside at 1505 East Tessier Drive in Tarpon Springs. I'm an artist, I have a studio and a gallery in Tarpon Springs, and I serve on the Public Art Committee. I begin with a quote from the Tarpon Springs Future Land Use Element, page 28, written July 2, 2009. "Future land use goal number one: Protect the cultural heritage, historic resources, tourist economy, and environmental setting of Tarpon Springs. Future land use objective number one: Ensure that all development is reviewed for compatibility with the cultural heritage, historic resources, tourist-oriented economy, and impact upon natural resources and the environmental setting of Tarpon Springs. Tonight, you are about to vote on a project called Reload, which defies those goals for development in Tarpon Springs. Reload, a proposed 60,000-square-foot indoor shooting range and weapons retail store, would be the second-largest such facility in the southeast and be even larger than our local Publix, Winn-Dixie, or Walmart. The message from Highway 19, as I see it planned, would be a red army tank near the entrance. The Tarpon Springs logo now changes to a large red tank. I am not against guns, and people who own them need to learn how to use them safely. I reviewed the site plan for Reload and the safety designs in place that use the latest technology. I trust that my city will take the greatest care in reviewing environmental issues, but my concern is something else altogether. My concern tonight is whether my city leaders have considered the nature of Tarpon Springs and why we all want to live here. We are a water community of sponge divers, fishermen, and boaters. We've built a strong cultural program, both in the performing and visual arts. We put our energy and money into education and music programs. We revel in our strong historical visual content downtown, on the sponge docks, and around the bayous. We protect our habitats, our sanctuary for birds and fish and manatees, and we acknowledge and support an organization called Peace for Tarpon. What is the nature of our town? How do we want it to grow? Your decision has an irreversible consequence. Do we want to change our identity for the money it will bring to our town in taxes and merchant business? Wasn't your commitment to build our community, to attract residents and visitors who seek the quiet, artful beauty and pristine history in Tarpon Springs? Are we changing our minds about the environment in which we want to live and how we want to be remembered? Peace for Tarpon, mermaids and manatees, bayous and beaches, Greek culture, historic architecture, art, dance, music, theater, guns? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Archie, Commissioners, Mr. La Chorus, and members of the panel. My name is Suzanne Murphy. I reside at 1505 East Tessier Drive in Tarpon Springs.
Good evening, Mayor Archie, Commissioners. My name is Nancy Shipes. I reside at 1287 South Distin Avenue in Tarpon Springs. I'm a registered voter, and additionally, I hold an MBA that led to a career that's given me a pretty good understanding of marketing concepts and analysis of target demographics. I'd like to speak to you tonight about two aspects of marketing that I believe will have a huge impact on our city. This is obviously a big place. There's money behind it. Plans sound like they are really soundly drawn and are trying to tick off all the boxes to make sure that bullets stay in the building and everything in the building is great. That's good. I know that when it comes to marketing this, that there will be an equally well-done marketing campaign much greater than any small business or the City of Tarpon Springs could do on its own. We will see marketing through the entire southeast region of the United States, where this will be the largest gun range, I'm told, and nationally, where I'm told it will be the second-largest gun range. Everybody will be subject to this type of marketing. You can imagine interviews, print, radio, TV, postal, email, articles, and the like. It's hard to imagine that potential visitors, especially first-time visitors to Tarpon Springs, having been subject to all of that, will then be able to associate Tarpon Springs with an afternoon of shopping on the sponge docks, boating on the Ann Cloat, a sunset dinner at Halah or Rusty Bellies, renting a bike for a ride on the trail, or maybe seeing a chance sighting of a manatee in one of the bayous. I believe that we will see a change in our tourist demographic. I believe that this place has done its homework. They know how many people they can attract. They're building a building the size that they think will be filled. They're not obviously doing this to lose money. So we will have a large, large number of people coming for the gun range, and I believe a much smaller number, particularly of first-time visitors, who, if you think about attrition over the years, means a total decline in the number of tourists coming to our sponge docks, our downtown area, and our surrounding parks and beaches. I was listening to, with all with all due respect, I was listening to the traffic survey about traffic being considered as less than when the Days Inn was active. I've lived in Tarpon Springs now for three years, and I know it's been at least three years since the Days Inn was active. I don't know how long it's been derelict. It looks like it's been derelict for a long time. So I'm not quite sure why we're accepting a traffic study that shows us a decline in traffic comparing to a business that was active many, many years ago. There will certainly be an increase to the traffic that we have now. The second aspect I want to talk to you about is the marketing that we currently see from, well, I was I was reading that it was called European Equities of Clearwater. I'm hearing now that it's something called Whole Development. I don't know. They're somehow connected, I suppose. But the current marketing does show the large red tank out in front. They have done their homework. It's a well-studied demographic. They know who they're targeting. They chose to depict a tank, weaponized military vehicle on the exterior. And why would they do that? It's cool. This big tank, it's really cool. It'll attract people. Weaponized military vehicles aren't cool. The purpose is to destroy property and life. And in the case of, excuse me, in the case of my young husband, a weaponized military vehicle is a place where soldiers die and where military families are torn apart. They are not cool. You can argue whether or not we need them in war. You certainly don't need them in Tarpon Springs. We don't need to be attracting the kind of people who are titillated and attracted by a deadly weapon of war.
If I might, I don't want to interrupt you, but I've been trying to be lenient all afternoon or night, as far as the four minutes. That's there. That's what it says in here, that you have four minutes to to talk. If you could kind of wrap that up, we would definitely appreciate it.
I will.
I know you have a lot. I know it's emotional, but if you could wrap it up, because there are quite a few other people that would like to speak here tonight, too.
Yes. There may be someone willing to lend some time to me. I would like to address the police department, if that's okay.
You still need to wrap it up.
Yes, I understand.
I haven't heard anybody say they give it up anytime or anything like that. You're on one side, there's some other people on the other side. None of us want to be here all night.
May I ask if there's someone who's willing to lend me two minutes? Thank you.
I just asked, you know, in order to give time, you have to be sworn in. Is that just somebody in the audience that would like to? And I'm not saying that to be argumentative. I'm just saying it so that we can have a process, that's all.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So to repeat, we don't need to be attracting people who are titillated and attracted by weapons of war. The owners who would consider such people to be their target demographic should engage in some deep soul searching. I'm also told that the police have to travel a long distance to find a gun range and that they do this on their own time and their own dime, which I don't know if that's true. If it is, I think it's a big disservice to our police department and to the people who live and visit Tarpon Springs and rely on the expertise and the competence of our police I do have a proposal that I would like for the commission to consider, and that is something that has been done in other other communities, and that is to search for a benefactor who would build a practice target range adjacent to the police station and accessed through the police station, so that our police department doesn't have to travel to, I'm not sure where 118th Street, 18th Street is, but it sounds like it's far away, thus allowing, enabling them to keep up their skills and to provide the best police for our community. I would even volunteer to work on such a search committee if that's what the commission would do. I think this is a group of people who have done their business homework very well and have also demonstrated that they have a very cavalier attitude about the deadly about deadly weapons of war, and I appeal to you to not allow them to open a business in Tarpon Springs that's based upon deadly weapons. Please vote this down. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time.
Janet Saniker, 90 South Highland Avenue, Tarpon Springs. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If I'm if I'm if I'm not mistaken, I believe the first knowledge of this project to the residents of Tarpon Springs was in the Tampa Bay Times on February 28th, 2014. That's less than two months ago. An indoor gun range measuring nearly 60,000 square feet and touted to the second-largest indoor gun range in the country, coming to a small, historic, and quiet town of 25,000, seems drastically out of proportion. Our town is widely known for its Greek heritage, its annual epiphany celebration, ethnic restaurants, and sponge docks that attract hundreds and sometimes thousands of people to our community. These are the reasons why my family and friends from up north come to visit Tarpon Springs. It's been brought to my attention that a large military tank will be placed in front of this massive facility to mark its location and to symbolize the nature of its business. A tank in front of a military base might be appropriate, but not on US 19. To me, this doesn't indicate a place for sport or recreation. It denotes militaristic activity and war, and I don't think Florida citizens or visitors need more reminders of that. I also feel that the name of the facility, Reload Gun Range, adds another frightening dimension. Why such a name? Even the largest indoor facility in Richmond, Virginia, is simply known as the Colonial Shooting Academy. I know of many people who share my concerns and were equally dismayed that there was very little news coverage and virtually no effort by the city to inform and discuss this project with the community prior to February 28th. And it was equally unfair and biased to set up a private meeting with an exclusive group of citizens who happened to live in close proximity to the project and to not provide a similar meeting for the general public to attend. The mayor and commissioners should recognize that the media's coverage of that meeting created an inaccurate assessment of the general public opinion on this project. I request that the mayor and commissioners postpone tonight's vote so that there can be further research into the gun range's compliance with the city's comprehensive plan and additional time to inform more citizens of the of the specific details pertaining to this project.
Helen Gladwin, 420 Doric Court, Tarpon Springs. I had many anecdotes to share with you, but first was Chief Cochin, whom I learned to admire and trust because, unfortunately, we had a gun used in our neighborhood, on our block, to murder two fine residents of Tarpon Springs. This murder took somewhat over a year to resolve, and during that time, it was a matter of domestic terror, at least for Doric Court and Chesapeake, and we needed to trust our police department. Unfortunately, it could have been Sandy Hook, because the shooter was homeschooled, isolated, unemployed, and very familiar with guns. He was an NRA instructor. There were many guns openly displayed in his parents' home. The numbers varied, 16 or so, I guess you'd remember, I'm a little fuzzy on the numbers, and something over 16,000 rounds of ammunition. This with a youngster who was isolated, unemployed, had a strong interest in guns, and keeping him satisfied was the parents' only program as far as what to do. At this time, the terror has subsided, but the house stands empty on our street. He attempted to burn it down. Certainly, there was a long period, as you recall, when we were pretty nervous, and you had a lot of questions from the residents in that area, and you tried to reassure us. It wasn't but a few weeks later that a similar incident happened at a gun shop in Tarpon Springs. And if the fire department were represented here, they would remember it very well, because after offing his relatives, who were owners of the gun shop, this young person set fire to the shop, and the explosion of the bullets caused the fire department to take a stand at some distance, and the place burned down. You could see the scars of that burning for a year, right next to Ace Hardware. It certainly was not hidden. I think you would call this domestic terrorism. It certainly, certainly made the community edgy. And I think from those experiences that are really very recent, there is an understandable concern about 50,000 square feet. I mean, I can't even conceive of what we're talking about. Now for a little personal anecdote. We had a call, the day, I'm sorry, am I up? The day after, we had a call the day after Epiphany from Bill's college freshman roommate, who was a bishop of Panama in the Episcopal, I got it right, Episcopal Church, and he was teasing. He says, "Does Bill remember what Epiphany is?" And I laughed, and I said, "Do we remember? That's one reason why we're here. We live in Epiphany City." And it was only like a day later that we get headlines in the paper about Epiphany Celebration in Tarpon Springs. I saved this to mail to him, so you know how quick I am in getting that done. But the fact is that Epiphany City somehow does not need to change to Gun City, USA. And that's the moral of the story. I hope you will understand why many of us feel that that's a change we shouldn't be making.
Gerald Goan, 1104 Clippers Way, Tarpon Springs. One other time when I spoke out on an issue, we were treated for about eight months of harassment. I can only hope this doesn't happen again. But I want to make it perfectly clear, I am speaking tonight as an individual, not through my association with any group. While you lived through an explosion in a gun shop here in Tarpon Springs, by the way, it doesn't matter what caused the explosion. What matters is it happened. I doubt any of you have lived through one that killed 41 people, injured 150 more, and completely destroyed a core area in a town just a little larger than Tarpon Springs. In 1968, in Richmond, Indiana, I had that experience. I was in Indianapolis, heard about the explosion as the emergency vehicles roared past us for about, and for three hours, I did not know if my wife and children were alive or dead. The issue is personal to me. I never want to have that experience again. If you do not have a written plan to deal with a massive explosion or the takeover of the business by a person or a group, you should not proceed any further until you do have such. Those situations will unlikely be like anything, anything, you have experienced and make the fire in the on Pinellas Avenue Gun Shop look like a Sunday afternoon stroll on the beach. Now, the above probably doesn't qualify as expert testimony, but it is factual and real, and it should be credible. Since this is a quasi-legal hearing, you are charged with the responsibility of coming to your decision based on the facts and the credible testimony you hear tonight, not what you have heard at work, in a coffee shop, or even across the kitchen table. You must make your decisions so that your facts and findings support your decision. Now for some opinions based on 15 years of conducting arbitrations before the American Arbitration Association. I understand the desire to have a convenient place to teach your son or daughter to shoot. But convenience is not a compelling reason to build a facility in an urban setting, nor is a convenience for the police to practice a compelling reason. I understand the desire to have the increased revenue, but building a facility more in line with the master plan, which has already been cited to you, Section 4, Goal 1... with the master plan, which has already been cited to you, Section 4, Goal 1, 1.1, will produce similar revenues. If the current structure is a hazard or nuisance, condemn it and tear it down. I understand the desire for jobs, but jobs will follow when the more compatible structure is built. So I'll leave you with one last thought. Build a gun range, but build it in a rural area where any mishap will minimize death and destruction. Don't build it in an urban area.
Nice to see everybody. My name is Barbara Schnipper. I live at 1124 Laurin Lane, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I'm not here for any committee, although I am on one of the committees, and I hope that all of you have a chance to see the mermaid that we dedicated last Wednesday. I'm here as a private citizen. I guess I have not had my ears to the ground because I didn't realize that this year had passed since this topic has been brought up. And I thought I was listening to what was going on in Tarpon Springs, my adopted city. So I won't say that you gave short notice, I was about to say that, but I hear that it really did get introduced a year ago. And before you make your decision, I sent all of you an email today, you probably didn't have time to read it yet, kept bouncing back to me because I didn't have David Banther's address properly on there. But when you get back, you'll probably have it. But what I said was, I urge you to think hard about permitting a business that is so incompatible with our beautiful little village to be built on U.S. Route 19. Although it may be good for business, and we do need businesses to be successful, it may change the entire nature of Tarpon Springs forever. I moved here in 2005 because it didn't look like the rest of Florida. It had so much charm that I couldn't resist it. And I had sworn I would never move to Florida from Maryland. So what I said in my email today, and I'm going to add a few comments to that, was the points were, it could increase environmental pollution, already near toxic levels in some places. A tank in front would give the wrong message for residents and for visitors, and potential visitors. And I know we get some from overseas, so that would include those as well. And they already think that we're a violent society. A fire could be disastrous with all the munitions inside the building. Traffic on U.S. Route 19 is already too congested, and we know what emergency we had on the swearing-in night when no roads were open. We would be known for having the second-largest U.S. gun range in the U.S. The first one was recently put in in Richmond, Virginia. And is it the right message for our children? Do we really want to teach them how to shoot guns? Anyway, a new traffic light, I'm sure would be needed on U.S. Route 19 to allow people to get in and out of this huge facility. And I wanted to bring up some other points that occurred to me after I did my email today. Before you make your decision on this particular project, I urge you to delay a vote in order to gather information from the Richmond, Virginia community, the location of the largest gun range in the U.S. I think you should send people there to talk to them about how the neighbors feel about it. Speak to the neighbors of the gun range, as well as those who opposed it, and you'll get all sides. This would help us avoid a mistake in building something that will never go away. I lived on a military base in Europe where everyone carried a gun, but they were very disciplined. They knew when to use those guns and when not to use those guns. And they did not take their duty lightly. I have a few questions I'd like to say at the end of my comments, and that is, how many people are expected to be using the Reload gun range in a typical day? Who makes sure all the visitors at the site are mentally fit to use a firearm? It sounds like this huge building will dominate aerial maps and certainly put Tarpon Springs on the map, but for the wrong reason. Thank you.
My name is Peter Grace, 95 Rachel Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida, 34689. I've never been before the board before, this is the first time I've been up here to speak to you all, and I appreciate the opportunity. And I'd like to ask you, first of all, if this is an appropriate time to ask questions of the applicant?
No, your job is, you have four minutes to state whatever that you'd like to-
I realize that, Mayor, actually. I'm asking you a question, is it-
And what I'm, sir-
I've never done this, is it appropriate for me to ask him anything?
If you talk, then I'll try to talk.
Well, okay, I'll just ask-
And what I'm trying to share with you is, this is four minutes for you-
All right, all right, fine, I'll take my time.
-to say whatever you choose to say. You can ask a question if somebody up here would-
Okay.
-take that question to them, but you can't be going back and forth.
That's all I wanted to know. Yeah, thank you. My question, then, is, the applicant made a comment that this has been in the works for a year. So can I ask the commission how long the commission has known about it?
You can ask, sir, but the commission's under no obligation to answer your questions.
Okay.
I mean, it's part of the quasi judicial process, I mean, you know, whether the applicant-
Well, okay.
...has been before the city-
That's fine, you don't have to say it anymore.
There's a process, there's a process included within the city's code, and that process has been followed relative to this application.
Okay, fine.
And I'm not trying to evade your questions, I'm just letting-
You don't have to take any more of my time, I know what I need to say.
We'll be suspending your time, that's fine.
Huh?
I just want to let you know, in terms of questions, the public input section is not a question and answer session with the commission.
I understand that, but the gentleman brought up the fact that this has been in the works for a year, and the people of this city just found out about it on February 28th. Okay? So I don't see how in good conscience anybody on this board can make a vote tonight because this city has not been given ample time to deal with this project. This has been railroaded into town, under the gun, or whatever you want to say, whatever terms you want to say, under the radar, and we don't feel that you've given us an ample opportunity to know about this thing. I'd like to know, for instance, what is the biggest gun that's going to be allowed to be shot there, for instance, okay? Are there people that are going to be riding into town with 50 caliber rifles? Are there people that are going to be riding into town with AK-47s from God knows where? These are the questions that we need to know, you know? The applicant says that there will be no criminals entering the building. I believe him. I believe this security will be great. But it's a fine line between being a criminal one minute and being a, I mean, being a law-abiding citizen one minute and being a criminal the next minute, because obviously, we all know that can happen in an instant, it can happen because you say the wrong thing to somebody, you throw popcorn at them, or whatever it takes. So the fact that he's saying that the people that enter there are not going to be criminals is comforting, but it doesn't mean that the people that, when they leave there, are going to act appropriately and as law-abiding gun owners. And I'm not trying to be negative towards gun owners, I feel they need a place to have their hobby, or whatever it is. I'm not a gun owner, I'm not a gun enthusiast, but I don't feel they don't have a right to have their gun ranges. But I feel that this city has a certain identity that is not served by being the second-largest gun range in the country, and the largest in the southeast, because it's going to make us a destination for people that we probably don't want here. People that may be carrying, driving vehicles with instruments of weapons that could be very destructive and very detrimental to the safety of the people who live, particularly around that facility. And I live right around the corner from that facility. And I don't think the fact that they spoke to Stonehedge and didn't come to Tarpon Springs was fair, because I only live about a stone's throw from Stonehedge. And I think that if this company wanted to present their project in a way that was fair to everybody, they would have given us a call at Tarpon Shores and said, "We'd like to come over and give you a presentation." And I think that basically, we don't, there is no, I can't see how you can consciously take a vote on this tonight, plus the fact that David Banther has those issues about his Facebook post. I think this whole meeting has to be postponed, and the vote has to be postponed to another time. Thank you very much.
Sandra Rogers, 39248, U.S. Highway 19, Tarpon Springs. I want to address just two or three very short points that I haven't heard brought up tonight. The first burr under my saddle was to hear how many jobs could be generated by Reload. We know that when Walmart was improved at Alderman, and when Walmart came into Tarpon, it is to my understanding that the corporations brought in their own people and housed them, maybe five and six to a house. I don't know how many people in Tarpon and the nearby area even got a job in that construction. Now, they have hired local people after they got the businesses going. The next thing I'd like to say is that if we have high caliber weapons, they should be in the hands of the police, firemen that need them for special projects, the military. If people want to hunt, then we need weapons that are regulated only for hunting and not for blood sport. We have weapons that go out there, what animal has a chance? And if that bullet doesn't hit the animal that's aimed at, how many more miles does it travel and hit some child, or maim it in its skull or in its arm for the rest of its life? And I see people out here grinning and pulling around on the floor and putting their head down. Yeah, you should be ashamed. We should all be ashamed to allow this to go on and on and on. I was 14 years old, I lived in a very rural area of Alabama, you may detect a little bit of a southern accent, no one? I can't call anyone, but I can't call incognito anywhere. At 14 years old, my father taught me how to fire a rifle, enjoyed loving to go out and target practice, loved it. We had a lot of fun, and that was it, you know? My dad did hunt, primarily squirrels. We ate a lot of squirrels growing up because TCI and the steel mills were on strike for many times, and the workers had to draw their pennies, or they were on strike and they didn't have anything. So we sold vegetables in the garden, and we ate squirrel. And my mother really knew how to cook it, and it was good. But what we have today with weapons is blood sport, people. Don't let this be covered up, and you people who help promote it, don't you dare be fooled. You go find some other kind of job to make your money. And are we all reading the same scripture that says, "You take your weapons of destruction and you pound them into plowshares"? And those of you in here who profess that you're Baptist, Methodist, Mormon, Episcopal, Catholic, I don't care what kind of religion we are, or if we are just conscientious people in society, that we do not allow this kind of behavior and proliferation of firearms throughout our country, our state, our nation, and the world to keep proliferating billions of dollars. It's billions of dollars, people, and that's why people keep proliferating this. Thank you very much. Love you all.
I have not done this before, I understand there's a swearing-in process that I missed.
Please raise your right hand, please. Do you swear affirm that the testimony about to given this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Burzbach, 1372 Pine Ridge Circle East, Tarpon Springs, 34688. Just so you know who I am, my mailing address has been Tarpon Springs for 23 years. I've driven through Tarpon twice a day to work, and I have worked to shop local every day, and I'm very proud of my city. On the subject of the gun range, I understand you have a responsibility to generate revenue, you have a responsibility to the taxpayers to generate revenue. But I have three things, three questions that I would like to ask. Since, as per the 2010 census, Tarpon Springs has the highest percentage of Greek-Americans of any city in the United States, and since our city's population is known to triple in size for our Epiphany celebration, and since our city has hosted one of the few visits to America by the Ecumenical Patriarch of the Orthodox Church, my question, my first question is, would the commission be willing to require the range to close the day before, the day of, and the day after Epiphany? I don't expect an answer, I'll submit my questions, and maybe I'll submit them by email, I'll submit a copy to the clerk, and I'll submit them by email, and I would enjoy an answer. My second question, and I only have three. Since many range patrons would be coming from outside the city of Tarpon Springs, from outside Pinellas County, and likely from outside the state of Florida, there are other opportunities to generate revenue. Would the commission be willing to require the range be part of a comprehensive plan that included a new hotel so that patrons would have the opportunity to generate revenue for the current business owners by remaining in the area, coming early, staying after? A new hotel would also serve our Epiphany patrons as well. My third question, would the commission be willing to require the comprehensive plan to include a new gas station so that as they fuel up when they arrive here empty and before they go home after they've spent money elsewhere in our city at the current businesses, we could also generate revenue for the city? At this time, I do not understand the reason the commission believes that a range is in keeping with the culture of our city. I hope that as you postpone this and further discussion goes on, it becomes clear. Thank you.
Any additional members of the public wish to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support, please.
I agree with some of the things that they have said here tonight, but this commission has to work within the law. The right of free enterprise, what your code books tell you, that's what you judge this on, not emotion. This company that's coming in has, doing my research, calling American Gun, the NRA, Riflemen, all of them, enjoy an impeccable reputation. They have gone above and beyond. I wish all these individuals had come to the Planning and Zoning Board so we could have answered a lot of questions at that time, but I'm speaking now as a taxpayer. You cannot get hotels here unless a hotel does a study and said they can generate a business and they'll come in and put money in. You cannot bring in a filling station until they do a program to research and say, "Our station will make money here." You can't bring any of these businesses in. They're going to do a research program to say it's viable for this community. We do not know how many guns come in and out of Tarpon every day in cars. We don't know what kind drive through our town.
We don't know what kind drive through our town. I bet you three homes out of five in Tarpon Springs have more than two guns in their homes. And ladies, when this comes, we should all go learn how to shoot a gun to protect ourselves. Everybody, that's how Hitler took over, because people stepped back. And don't think it can't happen again with what's happening in this world. When you have shootings, it's because it's individuals who are deranged, who can get guns on the black market and use it. This company is not responsible for that. They have come in, meeting the rules and regulations of this city, coming before the boards, and doing what they are supposed to do. That's what you're going to have to judge this on, not emotion, tonight. You are responsible to uphold and protect all our codes and our ordinances, and that's the only thing you work on tonight. And Mr. Manther, you have a right as an American, if you don't speak to another commissioner, to tell anybody how you feel. Every commissioner does. You can talk to anyone. And don't let emotions cloud this issue. This is important for Tarpon. It's something that's going to put a tax base on Highway 19, north or south. It's a project that's going to bring people into our restaurants, and they come and eat, they're hiding their guns in their cars. It's going to bring people in to buy our gas while they're filling up, they're hiding their guns in their cars. We don't know. It's not that bad. It's emotional. Judge your decision on your ordinances, your building codes, and what they're giving you before you as responsible developers. Thank you.
Please, y'all already know. I mean, a lot of y'all been here earlier. You like what they say, go up and say it yourself.
Good evening. My name's Pete Sarukas. I reside at 827 Seminole Boulevard. Tonight I heard several words that were, that I can attribute to just lack of education. First and foremost, this has nothing to do with firearms. Your emotions and your passions about how much you dislike them, for the ones who spoke against them, do have to do with firearms. This is a business decision. You are obligated to make the right choices for Tarpon Springs, and that's bring money in here so my taxes won't continue to go up, bring revenue into the city, so we can continuously support this city, expand our police department, our resources, and make it a much better city. And guess what? It's not Kansas anymore, people. We're not in Kansas anymore. There's guns out there. I'm an NRA instructor. This probably raised some hair on some of your back. I got about 3,500 people under my belt that I trained. None of them have hurt anybody. You don't like guns? No, no problem. You're probably the most signal one, I know. As far as you don't like guns, ask Officer Trill, who saved somebody with a gun in Publix. Ask the chief about statistics of his officers that went home at night because of guns. Ask me, who retired from Tarpon Springs as a police officer and spent 10 years overseas in 50 different countries as an intelligence officer, preventing counterterrorism measures in corporations and foreign government, including our own, what guns mean. I like guns. You know why? Because they saved my life, and indirectly, they have saved yours. That boy right there is my son. Five years old, he had a gun strapped on his side. Kind of makes you hurt, doesn't it? There's my daughter. She's going to be a deputy pretty soon. She's going to police academy, knows how to shoot. As far as people going in and out of a gun range that are going to harm people, these are the people that are going to protect you. These are the people that have the right to bear arms, sharpen their skills, educate them. Ms. Protas said the right thing. You ought to take an opportunity and educate yourself over firearms. Perhaps then you'll know what you're talking about. Weapons of war, really? Domestic terrorism? Teach our children. I bet you don't even know what weapons of war is by definition. Probably don't know what domestic terrorism by definition.
Ms. Sarukas?
Yes, sir.
If you could kind of address us.
Yeah, I know. I'm responding.
I don't want it to be where you're talking, there's somebody out there that's talking about you.
No, I know that, ma'am. I'm just addressing the issues that frustrated me, and I apologize. I wasn't going to make this an emotional thing. The right thing to do today is to vote this in. This is good for our economy. We're a prosperous city. We have been. We've had the reputation of being prosperous in the city. I'm Greek, love the Epiphany thing, love everything about Tarpon, but it's time to grow bigger. We've had opportunities in the past that we have lost. Today's the day to bring something that is incredibly good for our economy. Don't make this a passion. It has nothing to do with anything. I may not like ice cream, but it doesn't mean they can't open a store here. I'm not really crazy about people drinking and driving, but we have bars. It's a matter of personal responsibility. I know the people in the city are responsible with firearms, and I know you, as a commission, are responsible enough to make the right decision. You need to go ahead and pass this, and let's get this project on the road, and let's enjoy it. As far as those people who spend so much time researching, you'd be better off spending your time in front of an abortion clinic where they're killing kids.
My name's Robert Alderman, and my business address is 27 North Ring Avenue here. I've been there about 36 years. We go back six generations in Tarpon. I'm in favor for this project that's going on for a number of reasons here. One of them, when I was in the sixth grade, well, when we grew up in Tarpon Springs, some of the older folks would know that, where we had our rifle range was where the high school is out there now, was a sand pit. We had no instruction. We'd get guns from our parents or whatever. A good friend of mine, L.D. Jones, again in the sixth grade, was out here where they were playing target practice out at the cemetery. He threw the can up in the air. A friend of his followed it down, shot, and it went in and killed him. So I've had a great deal of respect for guns ever since then. But the thing is, we never were taught the right way to deal with guns. This organization here is going to have schools, and possibly the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts to teach them what's right, what's wrong about this. The economic impact on Tarpon, I think is going to be wonderful. I've worked up through all the chairs of the Chamber of Commerce and the rest of them over here. The advertising, these folks are going to put into the community to bring patrons here to our community. We need those folks. They're taking a derelict building here, and they're putting it into a modern facility out there. It's safe. It's been proven safe. More than anything, it's the education that we're going to get out of it here. It gives our police officers a place local, they can go out there with the training and get good training. My daughter, she carries a weapon. She's a supervisor with the FBI. I didn't teach her that. They did, and I'm glad they did. And it's like our police officers here, my daughter, and the others out there, it's the weapons that protect us. And it's the weapons that protect you and I. One of our forefathers said, you know, "You melt down your guns and turn them into plows, you're going to be the person behind the plow, because the one with the gun's going to come in and make you plow his field." Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, if the applicant would like to make a closing statement? Anything?
Any of those questions that you heard, if you liked the answer, you can, if you don't, you know?
I guess I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you guys. I mean, it's, you know, like we discussed, it's a permitted use of the site. This, you know, isn't really a gun control issue that I guess is being addressed here tonight. I mean, I grew up in this area, graduated from Tarpon High, graduated from St. Pete College Tarpon, so I'm not this crazy, crazy person as is portrayed. But I guess the one thing I would like to quickly say is, in regards to the explosion or the fire, the fire chief, as part of the Technical Review Committee, reviewed these plans, and this entire building has a full automatic fire sprinkler system. It's also, like we discussed earlier, it's got concrete on all four sides. So if a fire did break out, the fire sprinkler system would immediately trigger, put out the fire. There's a fire alarm system, and the, like I said, the fire chief has reviewed these site plans, and we actually added one additional fire hydrant for him per his notes. So I thank you guys. I think it's down to making a decision on if this meets the land use code. We've abided by the process, the procedures that are laid out with the city of Tarpon, and we've gone through the entire process to get here tonight, so appreciate your time if you have any other questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have a question, ma'am. Mr. Floyd, you mentioned something about in order to enter the building, you have to slide your driver's license. Is that correct? Or did I interpret that wrong?
No, it's not to enter the building. When you enter the building, you have to register. There's, it's on the plans, but there's kiosk to like register, and you slide your driver's license. That's how it enters you into the system. That's how you would get on a, you know, the list to go in and get a lane for the, to practice.
So do you have to slide your driver's license every time?
Yes.
Or just register?
Yeah, when you, no, when you enter, that's the way you...
With your driver's license?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And that's a safety precaution? If you were, if you were one day a criminal, or one day a law-abiding citizen, and a week goes by and you're now a criminal and you cannot possess a firearm or be around firearms, that's something that would be registered with your driver's license?
I could not answer. I don't know how the FDLE or anyone attaches that to a driver's license. I couldn't speak to that.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned our local law enforcement, or law enforcement using this facility for training purposes. Would our local law enforcement pay the same fees, or would there be a reduced fee for our local Tarpon Springs police department?
Correct, yes. There would be, and we would want to work it out during, you know, the weekdays. When the range would be slow, that would be their optimal time to go in and practice. And we did, the plans have, one of the ranges is a full tactical range, which is primarily used by law enforcement. It meets all the criteria for law enforcement to be certified and trained on their annual and biannual shooting. That's why we put that into the range.
Vice Minister Loz. Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about how many customers you envision going through your doors in a given day?
Yeah, I mean, there's 45 lanes, so you could only, you know, if you had someone on every lane, it's 45 people. Historical data shows that Friday, Saturdays are busier times. You know, it's like anything else, you don't know exactly, someone said, "We know all the numbers." We don't know all the, we don't know all the numbers yet. You would hope to have, you know, a person on each lane, but that doesn't always happen. If it does, historically, it's only certain peak hours, usually on Friday or Saturday.
The staff report indicates 1,344 total trips per day in terms of transportation, so I guess in terms of cars, 91 p.m. peak hour trips. Is that, do you believe that to be accurate?
Yeah, the average, the national average for someone that stays on a lane is one hour. So if you figure 45 people there for one hour, you know, if you had the same amount of people waiting, that would be 90 people.
Could you talk a little bit about your business plan in terms of who your target market is? How far away will the customers be coming from? What percentage of your customers do you envision being from Tarpon Springs, and how many are coming from outside of the city?
Well, all of the data shows that one in three homeowners in the Pinellas County area own a firearm. The usual travel distance that the demographics, we've been told, is someone will travel usually an hour from around it to use the shooting range. So the closest range that's comparable to this is over in Tampa. So this is, you know, when we picked this location, it was based on where other ranges...
How large is the one in Tampa that you're referring to?
60, it's bigger than this, 60,000 square feet. It just has less, a couple less lanes.
Fewer lanes?
Correct.
And how do you envision reaching your target market? Is this through television advertising, social media? Do you have a plan for that in place?
That really hasn't been derived yet. I guess we got to get past this point first. I mean, so much of it is, you know, word of mouth.
Sure. Okay. Somebody asked a question, I thought it was interesting. What types of guns will the customers be utilizing? And are there rules and regulations in terms of what's the biggest type of gun that they could use? Are you able to answer that?
Yeah, they can shoot any gun that's legally, you know, by the law, that they can carry. There's regulations, you can't have fully automatic weapons, you can't have weapons of mass destruction. You know, there's legal guidelines. The chief might be able to tell you exactly what those are, but I know the range is rated up to a 50 caliber weapon.
You also plan to sell guns? Is that correct or no?
Yes.
And when, in terms of the sales, you go through the state mandated background check process?
Correct.
Will there be any gun shows or gun swap type situations?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's my understanding, and I'm certainly no expert on this, but it's my understanding that the, when you're dealing with a gun show, the background checks and things of that nature, that the rules are different. Is that correct? Maybe chief, I don't know if you're able to answer that, or maybe the city attorney?
Obviously, he has to go through all the requirements under Florida law for background checks, sell guns. I'm not familiar, the laws change all the time with these gun shows, but I think they did tighten it up, but I'd have to do some research on that.
I mean, for the most part, gun shows, they're at the fairgrounds or those type of, you wouldn't have a gun show at a facility that, it's not conducive for that. Usually the gun ranges would take their stuff to a gun show. They wouldn't have it at their facility.
So in the event that your site plan does get approved of, you wouldn't mind adding the condition that gun shows would not take place at the site?
Yeah, I mean, I...
The reason I'm asking, because we, at the city level, we don't make laws regarding background checks and things of that nature for guns. That's handled at the state level. It's my understanding that the rules are different, and if in fact the rules are different, I just want to make sure that we're not going to be setting up a situation where guns are going to be bought or sold without the highest level of scrutiny.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's governed by the FDLE and those jurisdictions. I don't know what those rules or checks are.
So again, I was wondering whether or not, assuming your site gets approved of, you'd be okay with adding the condition that gun shows would not take place at the site?
I'm not sure. I would ask if you'd come to the mic, because I don't know if he even knows exactly what you're saying, so it's just a matter of trying to communicate what the answer is. Yes, sir, if you can come, and I don't know whether he was sworn in initially or not. Okay.
David McComas, 3797 Presidential Court, Palm Harbor, Florida. I'm the president of European Equities and the developer that's working together with whole development for the construction of the project. So as it relates to the gun show that you stated, I couldn't imagine that we wouldn't, if we were to do something like that, we would have to get a permit for that in order to facilitate having that type of an event. would have to get a permit for that in order to facilitate having that type of a, an event. Uh, the retail facility is merchandised, uh, and it's very limited in space, so it's not, we don't have any specific, you know, areas that we can just take all the merchandise out of and then go have an open area gun show. They're usually designated for, you know, the Florida State Fairgrounds, and they'll have, you know, 100,000 square foot facility, and then they have people that set things up. We don't, we have a, you know, we have, the whole merchandising structure of the retail facility is such that you can't move anything around to facilitate that occurring, so, uh, we would, we would have everything stocked and, and, and would have no real desire to, to have that. So, I mean, if there were an occasion that would require some type of a permit or special use, we would have to go through whatever governing body would require us to get that type of permit, if it was outside the scope of our use, that we, we were allowed to occupy the premises under our occupational license.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I was just wondering, did you want to ask, uh, Ms. Vincent if there was a gun show or anything of that nature, would they have to...
Yeah, if Ms. Vincent has any expertise on, on the subject.
Just get a permit from the city in terms of, of doing that, do you know?
Ms. Vincent, can I jump in before you answer?
Please do.
The question becomes somewhat academic, I think that if we were to condition, I'm going to advise the commission to condition, uh, the approval of the site plan on, on anything to do with gun shows or, or, uh, anything like that. Relative to the use of this property, is going to be in violation of the state's preemption on...
Right.
...the regulation of firearms and ammunition. So I, the question is entirely academic. I hope that's helpful.
Could, say that again, I'm sorry, what, why, why?
Uh, we, there's a Florida statute in place, put in place a year or two ago, Chief, I'm not sure entirely when, but it's 790.33, and it preempts the entire field of regulation of firearms, sales, and ammunition, uh, including the purchase, sale, transfer, taxation, manufacture, ownership, possession, storage, and transportation thereof, to the exclusion of all existing and future county, city, town, or municipal ordinances or regulations. My, my point in telling you that is that, uh, this, this application cannot be conditioned upon, um...
That type of condition couldn't be placed on. So theoretically, if this board had a problem with the prospect of a gun show, if, if it would potentially be in conflict with, uh, future land use goals, objectives, and policies, theoretically, the board could reject the application, but the board could not approve the application with additional conditions placed on it?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. Um, could you describe the tank?
Can, can we describe it?
Yes, please.
Well, we, we, we originally had, um, when we designed the building, on the front of the structure itself, uh, we have an area where we have, uh, a tank that we have that comes out of the building itself, it's an architectural element.
How large is the tank?
Uh, we haven't decided yet.
Is it red?
No, it isn't, we haven't decided it yet.
Oh, okay, 'cause I thought there was a picture of it being red. And you're not sure how large the tank would be?
No, we, we are not at this time.
I see. Um, I have some additional questions for staff, but I guess we'll get to that at, at the appropriate time, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I think that's just me.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Is it, is it time for the commission deliberation?
Yeah, we could, uh, now would be time to ask questions of staff, unless there are any additional questions for the applicant.
I was going to ask him a question, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, um, and though, and though in looking at your plans, there, there is a, a large vault, obviously, and I assume in the evening and at night, or, or whenever it's closed, all the guns are locked up in the vault?
That's correct, if you look at some of the rendering pages where the displays are, those have locking doors, similar to what you would see in the, a mall atmosphere, and then all the other merchandise goes into the, the full vault at night, yes, sir.
So it would be virtually, not impossible, but virtually impossible to break into that?
It would be extremely hard, and if, it would take time, and all the alarms and over 100 cameras would...
Correct. And then, Mr. Goen brought up the issue of the fire, uh, earlier, and I know you, uh, mentioned about the fire suppression. I assume it's more than just water sprinklers, it is state-of-the-art in that the building is built to contain any fire explosion...
Correct.
That is imaginable.
Yeah, I mean, each, each, uh, range is independent of itself. So you have, like, the, uh, the rifle range is one complete system, its own AC ventilation system, and then the, the four other ones are completely independent. So if you had an issue in one, it's contained to that, to that one, yes, sir.
And then this is not something that I would want to put in a condition or require anything, but I would maybe rethink the tank, just out of a goodwill, I mean, just, I don't know, might, it might help some issues out, so, thank you.
I don't have any, uh, questions for you, uh...
I'm going to correct something that you said. My first question involved around...
It, I would ask the, uh, attorney, you know, we've closed that part, you know, so...
Yes, we have.
It, it goes to, uh, there's some questions for the staff, so you could have a seat there. Ms. Vincent? You said you had some additional questions?
Can I, can I make my, my statements before you? Thank you.
Yes, please.
Um, just wanted to address, um, a couple of issues, um, with regard to, to the comprehensive plan and how this was evaluated, and, and also bringing in the state statute. You know, we have to look at this as comparable to another commercial recreation type of use, you know, a bowling alley, a, um, a golf driving range, even anything like, you know, those are similar types of, and retail sales. And, uh, with regard to the, to the size of the installation, um, yes, it's a large building, uh, it's not as large as what's coming down, and what was there before, but keep in mind also that a huge part of this, almost half of this space is dead space, it's the actual gun ranges itself, it's not occupied space. Um, but that is a necessity for a gun range, and they are having, you know, 100-yard gun ranges, so it does take up a lot of area, you know, in terms of a footprint on the ground. Uh, but that's not all occupied space. Uh, you could have a huge gymnasium there that operates 24/7, that will generate a lot more trips and a lot more traffic impact. So, uh, you know, there, with regard to the traffic impact study, uh, yes, we do look at it in relationship to the previous use that's, that's there. So there's an inherent, uh, credit, if you will, and the proposed new use that's coming in is, you know, based on a PE transportation impact study, is, is less, less trip generation. I realize that flies in the face of some people's logic, that, well, what's there is not even in operation now, but that's, that's the way, that is the way that we do review those types of, of studies, when we do these, uh, site plan reviews. Um, again, I'll, I'll reiterate, you know, I find that this is in compliance with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. You know, if you were going to take this range and go tear out, you know, a couple of blocks of downtown Tarpon Springs, is that impacting the culture and history of the city? Absolutely. This is US 19, it's a commercial corridor, you know, this is entirely, you know, compatible with existing and planned uses in the area, it's a commercial corridor. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have, thank you.
I, I'm going to look, uh, Vice Mayor, if you have...
Thank you, yeah, thank you very much. Um, the first question I have is in regards to what's there right now, uh, in terms of the people that came to the podium and some of the emails that we received, a lot of people are very excited, uh, to get rid of what's there now. I, I wrote down, somebody said, "Old hotel falling apart, uh, if the current structure is a hazard, then tear it down." Uh, I wonder if we could get an update on where we are, uh, from a code enforcement standpoint on that structure? Uh, specifically, what I'm wondering also is what the future would look like from a code enforcement standpoint, in the event that, uh, this project gets approved of, but then, you know, five months down the road, their financing situation changes and they walk away, that type of thing, I mean, you know, we had that with Lowe's, I mean, these things can happen. So I, I'd like to know what, what the future is from a code enforcement standpoint, 'cause it really is problematic how long it's been there looking the way it does right now.
Um, I am not personally familiar, Chief, do you have any background on...
I mean, we would, like any other code case, we would evaluate it, apply it to our ordinances, and take action, and ultimately, they go before a code board, and they would levy fines, but we would handle it like any other code case.
Is there currently an open code enforcement case on it?
I'm not sure, I, I believe there is one, I'm not sure.
I believe there is. Uh, it, the property's been in foreclosure, so getting any kind of compliance has been virtually impossible, but I know the property's been fenced, you know, to try to keep vagrants out and things of that nature, but, um, I am not, I'm, you know, I apologize for not knowing that, it's something that we should've had, had some knowledge of, but, you know, as to whether or not there's a current code, code case or not.
I'd, I'd be interested at some point in getting an update on what's going on from a code enforcement standpoint, uh, and I would furthermore suggest that whatever process we have, that we continue that process, uh, regardless of whether or not this site plan gets approved of, because again, as we've seen with, with previous particularly large projects, sometimes something gets approved, and then they end up walking away for whatever, you know, whatever reason, uh, so I, I would like to suggest that we continue with the process, uh, of, in terms of code enforcement. Um, I also wanted to address a couple issues that came up in regards to, um, uh, public correspondence. Well, actually, first of all, I don't remember if it was Mr. Delaco, somebody mentioned that the, um, uh, backup wasn't provided in the binder in the back, I, I don't know, I don't know what the situation is on that, certainly, I presume, I, is, is there a binder back there today? Is there, is there any reason why, anyone know?
That would be addressed to the city clerk, I believe, I'm sorry.
There should be, so I don't know if somebody maybe took that particular agenda item with them to their seat, I'm not sure. Uh, I do know that this agenda item was, um, available on the website, so I do know that it was available there. Um, we received an email, uh, from Ms. Hickey, uh, indicating that there was, uh, I believe she said 71 or 72 petitions, uh, opposing the project. I'm wondering if they are here this evening, I'm guessing the people that sent the petitions wanted those petitions to be a part of the public record?
I have not personally received any petitions.
I don't think there's petitions, I think they're just emails and...
Letters, maybe petition was the wrong word. Um, she, uh, scanned one and emailed us a copy of the one, and said she had, I believe, 71 more. Um, I, I figured they would be here, I figured they would be a part of the public record. Are they not here?
I don't know if they're here or not, but they're all ones that you all received?
No, we didn't receive them, she scanned one, and...
The ones from today?
Uh, I believe I received the email from her yesterday, she scanned one and said she has approximately, I believe she said 71, 71 or 72 more. Um, she said she had them in a folder at her desk, I just presumed it would be here for the meeting, I presumed those people wanted it to be a part of the public record. I'm surprised if it's not here. Nobody knows.
I have not personally received them, I did, I did not get the email, so, um, I'm a little bit of a, a loss. I have this entire stack of public correspondence as, as of yesterday, it was up to date, so I, you know, I, I will also state that, you know, it's my understanding that petitions are...
Uh, maybe the word petition was the wrong word to use, but that was the email that Ms. Hickey sent, I just wanted to know whether or not they were a part of the public record, not, because I presume that's what their intention was when they sent it in. Um, on a related note, uh, we, we did receive a large number of emails and letters and so forth. On two of them, on April 9th, Mr. Lacourse, you responded to them by saying, "Could you please send your address for purpose of the official record?" These were both people who had emailed in, um, their, uh, opposition to the application, but I was curious about your email, because there were other people, both before and after April 9th, that sent in, uh, correspondence, uh, supporting the application, but not giving their address. I was wondering why you chose those two to respond to.
Well, first of all, the most of the ones that came in today and yesterday, um, while I was in budget meeting, I didn't have time, everybody should send them to the record. It was obvious that there was form letters, it was obviously emails coming from anyone else, um, and not identifying them, you know, at that date, I asked them to identify them. Now, most of the ones that didn't either said they're residents, at least said they're residents, or had some, a bunch came in yesterday I didn't get to and stuff, but...
I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry, but I, I'm not referring to yesterday, the, the ones that you responded to were on April 9th, but there were some that came prior to April 9th that there was no response to, or at least I didn't get a copy of a response, uh, but they also did not supply their address. I just, I was wondering if there was a particular reason that two people that were opposing the project got a request for their address for the record, but two people that supported the project did not get that response?
No, there's no rhyme or reason to it, everybody should supply that and stuff, but as they, as it went along, um, you know, when the deluge came in and they were obviously form-related and, and not otherwise, it was just, you know, exhaustive to do.
Do we, and I'm, and I'll, I'll keep this brief, 'cause I'm getting a bit off topic, but when, when we have people speak at the podium, they're supposed to state their name and address for the record, and that's, that's kind of our policy. We don't have any policy in regards to people that email, or, or do we? I, I'm not aware of one.
Probably not.
Okay, I'm just curious, I guess. Um, the other question I had, I guess, is for the city attorney, uh, some of the people , uh, mentioned that we need to work within the law, um, in terms of looking at this item, and, and certainly it's quasi-judicial in nature, uh, and I understand that a shooting range is considered a permitted use, um, particularly at that location on US 19. When we look at, though, the, um, the comp plan and the future land use goals, objectives, and policies, goal one says, "Protect the cultural heritage, historic resources, tourist economy, and environmental setting of Tarpon Springs." When we, when we look at that goal, you have to look at each of those aspects, is that, is that correct? You can't just look at tourist economy, you also have to look at cultural heritage and historic resources, is that...
I, I would say that's written in the collective, yes.
Okay, so, in terms of whether or not something is a permitted use, it, it certainly is allowable, if it's a permitted use, uh, adult entertainment, I believe, would be a permitted use at that address as well. But if you talk about hypothetically, the, the largest strip club in the United States, it's a permitted use, but that theoretically could be in conflict with goal one of the future land use element of the comp plan, is that, is that correct?
Oh, boy. That's, that's a fairly, uh, that's a terrible question.
Well, I guess my point, and you don't need to spend a lot of time worrying about a strip club, 'cause that's not what's on our agenda, but my point is that size actually does matter, uh, in terms of, in, in terms of the size of a building, and, uh, how large it is, and what their draw would be, actually could impact, uh, certain aspects of, of that goal in the comp plan.
Uh, I, I'm not touching that one with a 10-foot chrome pole. I, I, it... What I'm going to advise the commission tonight is that you need to base your decision on the four criteria in Section 210.04 under the standards for site plan review. Um, I can't tell you, Commissioner, that you can't, you, you couldn't conclude as, as an individual commissioner, that size does matter as it relates to, uh...
You say I could conclude that?
You can, you, I think you can conclude that theoretically, yes, based on, uh, you know, the, the historical heritage and the factors that you mentioned from the comp plan. Um, you, you need to make an individual determination of whether the competent substantial evidence supports that position, you know, probably based on, on the prior use of the property, the proposed use of the property, and the fact that it is a permitted use.
Okay. Um, and I was going to ask Chief Butcher a question, but I know he's not here. I understand that there's a sprinkler system in place, but does the fire department, and when I look at the staff report, I don't see it, does the fire department have a specific emergency plan for this, for this site? Mr. Lacourse, is that something you're able to answer?
I don't believe it's specific for the site, but I believe they have it for, uh, they have it for any situation, uh...
They, they pretty much have an emergency plan for every commercial structure, they know where paint sto, I mean, they, they have interior maps, they know how to attack a, but given situ, given a situation, they know how to go in and fight a fire or anything like that based on...
Sure.
They, they have that for, I think practically every structure in Tarpon Springs.
Fantastic fire department. No, the, the reason I ask is because I know, I don't remember, three years ago now, I guess, the Silver Bullet, um, gun shop, uh, because of the, the guns that were on site, uh, I believe the, the fire department did feel the need to keep their distance, and it, it definitely slowed them down in terms of doing, uh, doing what they do, and I'm, I'm just wondering whether or not a, a particular plan could be developed, uh, this, this obviously would be much larger and would have a lot more guns on site than the Silver Bullet location had, so that's, that's where I was heading with that question.
Yes, when that place is built, I guarantee you they'll have a plan for any situation for that place when it's built. They'll know where everything is, all the circumstances, and both police and fire for any situation, we'll, we'll have a plan ready for that particular building.
Well, I, I would think during site plan review is when we would discuss such a plan. Um, those are really the questions I have, I have additional comments, but, uh, I, I don't know if we're at that point, Mr. Mayor.
Well, we're at the point of, uh, getting a motion to extend this meeting past 11.
Move to extend the meeting past 11.
Uh... After a roll call...
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tierpenny?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Commissioner Tarpen, you have a question?
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Vincent, in the words of Mr.
Thank you. Ms. Vincent, in the words of Mr. Armstrong for the record, could you please list your education and qualifications as a planner?
Sure. Wasn't expecting to get asked that tonight. I have a degree, a master's degree in urban regional planning from Virginia Tech, 1995. I've been a professional planner ever since. I've been certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners for 16 years, and virtually all of my professional experience is working in, in planning. So I feel I am very qualified as an expert witness in planning-related matters.
And you've been a planner with the city of Tarpon Springs for how long?
12 years.
12 years. It was mentioned earlier about US-19 and the number of trips from the current use in relation to this use. What is currently the level of service of US-19?
That segment is operating, I believe that segment is operating at a level of service F.
Level of service F?
Yes.
Okay. It was also mentioned about timing of this project coming to fruition and whether or not there was adequate time for the public. What are the requirements for this public, for public advertising for this hearing?
There is no requirement for public notice per se. If it's a conditional use, rezoning, you'll have mailed notice to adjoining property owners and things of that nature. This is a permitted use by right. It simply goes through the site plan review process. So it appears on a technical review committee agenda, which is a public meeting, and then it also obviously appears on the planning and zoning board meeting as, as an agenda item, as well as the Board of Commissioners. But there is no special requirement for public notice per se for a site plan for permitted use.
And you mentioned the difference between a permitted use versus a conditional use or a rezoning. Could you briefly give a description of the differences?
For the, for public notice?
No.
Oh, just...
The difference between a permitted use or a conditional use or a rezoning?
Well, obviously, with a rezoning, you're actually changing the potential list of permitted and conditional uses, and so that's something that does require public, you know, public notice. You know, there's no change of zoning here. This is not a rezoning hearing. This is a, the zoning is established here. It's highway business, and it's a permitted use by right. Conditional uses are those uses which are somewhat permitted as long as they take an extra look at the, at the project. There is public notice involved in that to just, to ensure that there's no, no additional concerns or conditions that need to be tied to a particular use. Someone was talking about, you know, like a liquor license is a, you know, all those are conditional uses in the city of Tarpon. So there's, there are higher, maybe perhaps higher intensity of use, permitted uses are deemed, you know, pretty much as you're meeting the Land Development Code, are going to be deemed compatible with, you know, with the area. Does that answer what we were... Okay.
Sure. It was more so as an example. In your professional opinion, are there any issues with compatibility in the surrounding areas or businesses?
In my professional opinion, no. This is entirely contained within the site. Sound's not going to travel past the property line. You know, it's a commercial use. It's Highway 19. And so, no, for those reasons, I find, my professional opinion, that it is compatible with, with the area.
If it wasn't compatible, would it be a permitted use?
If it wasn't compatible, would it be a permitted use? City Attorney?
Good planner.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, can, I mean, could you potentially have something, you know, a potential use, you know, that perhaps maybe, in this instance, you know, if this were an outdoor shooting range, I think that would be incompatible.
Okay. In the backup, it was mentioned that all construction and permitting must comply with any and all regulatory agencies?
Correct.
I have some additional comments, but I'll save this. Thank you.
One thing I'd like, and we haven't had, so I don't want to get into some things. Have you made a ruling on Commissioner Baffler?
Yes. Actually, did I get a chance to look at Mr. Gamble's memorandum as well as the attachment to it. I was able to pull the Attorney General opinion that he referenced. I don't find a violation of Chapter 286 relative to Sunshine. Even if I did, and I want to stress that I don't, recusal or excusing him from the vote would not be the appropriate remedy anyway. I don't believe that Commissioner Banther has any other valid reason under Chapter 112 to recuse himself, i.e. a financial interest. So again, I don't find a violation, and I don't think that if there was one, that recusal would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Baffler?
Thank you. And...
Excuse me. Point of order says that the public comment has ceased, and this is commission comments. Anything else that you feel that you need to do, it's not going to happen here at this meeting. Thank you. Commissioner Baffler?
Okay. I was going to ask, this applicant's not asking for any variances whatsoever, right?
No, sir.
Correct. And I believe in the, when I was reading the backup, there's going to be, and street screening might be the wrong word, but is there going to be any kind of buffering, not for sound, but for aesthetics, between the building and, I think it's Stonehenge behind there, there's trees and whatnot?
Yes, they are meeting the required buffering requirements between, you know, commercial and residential uses, in addition to the required tree plantings and landscape plantings. In the rear of this, in the rear of, in the rear of the gun range is where the two flex buildings will be, which will be a further buffer from the, from the gun range itself.
And is there a timeline for the demolition of that, of that building as far as, and it's getting late, I'm sorry, it might have been in the backup, but as far as if we approve this, how soon that, the existing building, which, which Vice Mayor pointed out, has been mentioned many times, as the, an eyesore, and it's good that it's being replaced, is there a timeline they have to do it by?
We don't, we have not specified a timeline as a condition. I think I, I think I have this correct. They have an active demolition permit that's been applied for. So I might, I understand they'll probably move quickly, but there's not, there's not a timeline that we would set, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Commissioner Seber, I just want to say something to, to everyone as we move ahead, is that this process here that we're talking about, and some of the things that Commissioner Tarepani has talked about, there are some procedures that we're supposed to follow regardless. And I know some people feel that we should have contacted everybody in Tarpon, and everybody in Tarpon should have a say in this. And I would just say it's the same way as if you have a home, you want to build a certain type of home, that home meets all of the standards of the city of Tarpon. It's not the whole city's responsibility then to weigh in whether it's this color, that color, or whatever. That's why there is a process. That's why there are procedures, so that each and every person can be dealt with fairly. One of the things that was mentioned is about the emails and the rest of it, you know, for us to ask, all in favor of the gun range, stand, we count them, all opposed, and there's more people opposed, then our job would then be no, or vice versa. That's not the way that this process works. Everybody's opinion is valid, but we are at a point of looking at what is considered substantial and competent evidence. So as we move ahead, one of the things that I like to, to, just to emphasize, because we talked about the comprehensive plan review, in our backup, it says, "The proposed plans are in conformance with the goals, objectives, policies of the city of Tarpon Springs comprehensive plan." In your opinion, as staff and the credentials that have been stated, do you agree with this policy?
Yes.
With this statement?
Yes, I do.
Do you believe that they have met every standard for the city, that the city of Tarpon Springs has for this project as a permitted use?
For the, for the level of review that we are at with site plan review?
Right.
Yes. Yes, I do.
Okay. And the reason I say that is that this is basically where we'll be at, at some point in time when we look at trying to make a decision. It's not a matter of how many out there is for it, how many out there is against it. It's not even a matter of how many of those emails came in, said it was for it, how many emails said it was against it. I've had emails from the Boy Scouts say that they'd be glad to have this. I've had other people say it's the worst thing in the world. You know, we've had businesses, Russ, weigh in, say that. None of that stuff is acceptable as, as any type of evidence that we should be considering as we move forward here. So with that, I'll go to Commissioner Seber as far as any question that you might have, and then we'll try to look at some type of motion to move ahead.
I understand that developers willing to tear down the existing building at their own expense, which from my understanding, with other developers who've attempted or come to the city for this property, were not willing to do. So I just wanted to verify that.
Ooh, I don't, there have, there have been proposals that have been pitched to the city that, you know, we're seeking city assistance. I'll just say that. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The other thing that I say as we move ahead, I've heard that people talk about the revenue that will come into the city, economics, rest of that. It's a great thing, but that's not one of the things that we should be considering. One of the things that we could be, should be considering is what does our statute say as it relates to this business, period. Yes, it'd be good, taxes, rust, everybody want it, but is, how do we act in a manner that's appropriate, as for as to what's before us? So with that, if there are no other comments, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. If I could, I'd like to first explain the motion. I think we have an opportunity to create a win-win situation for the city. I think right now, there's a lot of hostility on both sides, that, you know, everybody wants what they want. What I think could be an option here, because we are dealing with a permitted use, I don't think saying no is really an option, not a legal option at this point. But I think what could be an option could be to defer and give the applicant time to make a few modifications to the project, including removing the tank, which I think is in direct conflict with Goal 1 of the future land use element, also scaling back the size of the project. The large size, I believe, is also in conflict with Goal 1 of the future land use element. This would also give our fire department time to develop any safety plan or explain what they would need to do in terms of having a safety plan. This would also give staff time to allow the 71 people that emailed in their opinion of the matter to have that email be a part of the public record, because it isn't as of right now. So again, because it is a permitted use, I don't think that there's really an option of saying no, but what I think we could do is defer, and that's going to be my motion, to defer, give the applicant an opportunity to make some of these modifications, and hopefully, we can create a win-win situation for the city. It kind of reminds me of what's going on with the Bay Shore development, where a developer came to the city wanting to develop that wooded area by Bay Shore a certain way, and this board had, had some problems with that and rejected it at that point in time. Later, a developer came and said, "Hey, we'd like to put together a development agreement and try to develop this area, and we're now moving in that direction," hopefully creating a win-win situation for the city. It also reminds me somewhat of the Walmart situation, where, you know, some people wanted Walmart, some people didn't, some people had concerns about the environment. What ended up happening after a whole lot of meetings, what ended up happening is we have a Walmart, and we also were able to protect the environment across the street from it there. So I think we've got a similar opportunity here to create a win-win situation at this time. I'd like to move to defer.
Not here in a second that motion actually fails. One of the things is that putting the emails in that the people have on record could still be done, and it's up to the attorney. I don't think that that has any weight as it relates to our decision. So many are for us, so many are against. It would be the same as these people here standing up and doing that. I'll ask this question to staff, if I can. Is technical review a part, the fire department a part of the technical review?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
You know, so I know it's an assumption, but I would think that their job there would be to make sure as far as public safety is concerned, it'd be a part of the technical review committee. But with that, Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, based on the competent and substantial evidence presented tonight, I move to approve this application as presented.
Second. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Could I ask the maker of the motion if you'd be willing to add the condition that the tank be removed from the site plan?
Is that something that can legally be done, Mr. Attorney?
It could be done if the mover believes that it is in conflict with the Goal 1 of the comprehensive plan, based on the competent and substantial evidence you've seen tonight.
I don't necessarily believe that, but I'm always willing to compromise. I like to have a unanimous approval when it comes to something controversial.
Is that your election, then?
Excuse me?
It's at your election to amend the motion as requested, if you desire to.
I would ask the applicant if that's something that would be considered appropriate, or if you'd be willing to do that.
We would, we would consider doing that if that mattered that much in the city.
Okay, then I will amend my motion to approve the, approve the resolution with the exception of removing the tank from the exterior of the building.
Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Seber? Yes. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. With that, we'll go to item number 23, Resolution 2014-09, authorized signatories.
That's simply the new signatures with a new vice mayor and the signatures appropriate to sign documents.
Let me read the resolution just for the record.
If y'all might just hold it down a little bit, we, I know y'all have taken care of the business, but we still got a little business to take care of.
Resolution 2014-09, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, designating certain officials as authorized signatories on negotiable instruments of the city of Tarpon Springs. Resolution 2014-09 by title only.
Any questions? Chair will entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any public comments on this item? Roll call?
Commissioner Seber? Yes. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner Tarepani?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. That concludes our agenda. Chief?
No staff comments, Mayor.
Sir Attorney?
No, sir.
City Mayor?
No, sir.
State Clerk?
Good night.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
Commissioner Tarepani?
No comments.
Commissioner Seber?
No comments.
We will adjourn this meeting at 11:17, I believe.